We'll go ahead and get started. Are there any comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda? Yes?
I'd just like to ask, I saw on the second or attached to the agenda, the superintendent's report about the changes in the elementary school education model, is that on the agenda?
I think it's going to be covered under Agenda Item 8, the multi-tiered systems of support.
Okay.
Yes. It's not worn for action, I think it's an introduction at this point, but if you're here for that, there will be some discussion on it. Any other comments from the public of items that are not on the agenda? All right, seeing none? Thank you, David, I got your one agenda item. Any amendments to the agenda?
No, I think only that we started our executive session at 5:30, we probably should just make note of that. Elizabeth? Yeah, it's up on that.
All right. Okay, we'll move to Agenda Item 5, announcements and student representative report. I guess Cole, our junior representative, is still in Croatia, is that correct?
Yes, he is part of the band trip, so I don't know what, when they're getting back exactly, but he did text me today. So, high school senior Vera Skaha-Hais is competing in the National Poetry Out Loud competition in DC. This is actually her second year doing it. She's been the Vermont State champion two years in a row, but this year, she's now in the national championship, which is happening right now at seven, against eight others, and that's obviously really impressive. Yesterday, she won the semifinal. On May 3rd, South Burlington High School juniors will be taking the Vermont Science Assessment. Juniors will follow the regular bus schedule with a regular start time at 8:40, while it's a late start for all other grades. And information is posted on the high school webpage. The Allstate, excuse me, I'm a little under the weather still, so my throat's off. The Allstate Music Festival is taking place at Montpelier and U-32 from May 8th to May 11th. Chamberlain School is having a bike rodeo on Saturday, May 4th, from 10 to noon. The Frederick H. Tuttle Middle School will be presenting the Muse School Newsies on Friday, May 10th at 7:00 PM, and Saturday, May 11th at 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM. Tickets can be purchased online, and the link is found under announcements on the middle school webpage. The Rick Marcott Central School will be having a PE dance performance on Thursday, May 2nd, from 6:15 PM to 7:30 PM. Orchard Schools Grade K through 1 Spring Concert is taking place on May 7th. The Grade 2 through 3 Spring Concert is on May 8th, and the Grade 4 through 5 Spring Concert is on May 9th. All the concerts are from 8:20 AM to 9:00 AM. And today also at the high school was freshman community service day. In the spring, it's a full-day event where the slam program, led by the senior slam leaders and all freshmen, participate in community service events all around the community. And that was today, and that was a lot of fun and successful. That's it.
Great, thanks.
Yes.
Any other announcements, David?
Uh-uh.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 6, to consider the ratification of agreement with the South Burlington Educators Association, the Educational Support Professional Unit.
Okay, I just wanted to give a quick summary before we vote, if that's okay, Elizabeth. So, we settled a tentative agreement on April 8th with the ESPU, the Educational Support Professional Unit. They ratified the agreement on April 17th. The summary of the terms are that it's a $0.28 per hour increase in the salary scale, with a minimum $0.50 raise per employee. Total new salary money is $87,000, or 3.14% increase. Total salary has increased from about 2.7 to about 2.9. Healthcare provisions stayed the same as they were in our previous contract, so the district is paying 91% of the premium, and employees have 350 for a single plan out-of-pocket, up to 1,050 out-of-pocket for a family plan, but there is what we call a donut hole, where they pay half of that as first dollar, then the district pays a portion, and then if they use up the total maximum out-of-pocket, they pay the last portion of that out-of-pocket. New healthcare money is about $97,000, an increase of 9.3%, mostly driven by the increase in premium cost. And total compensation increases from $3.8 million to about $4 million even, a total of $183,925, or about 4.83%. Other changes in the contract are that we changed, there's no longer a custodial plus job title, we changed to a lead night custodian who's appointed as necessary, and they'll get a slight salary premium on the nights they do that. We cleaned up some FMLA leave language, just some changes in the law that we needed to incorporate in the contract. There's now a 60-day probationary period for new employees before they're eligible for all of the provisions in the contract. We did away with emergency day leave because it was combined with bereavement leave, there was some concern that there might not be enough bereavement days for someone if we had already had several emergency days in the school calendar. In exchange, we agreed to pay support staff for emergency closure days, and so there's a bunch of new language in the contract about how that's going to work. We increased the payment to substitute teachers from $25 a day to $35 a day to bring us more in line with other districts in the area. We changed some language on safety protocols, just so it's clear what happens if there's an incident between a student and a staff member before those two work together again. And we had a lot of discussion about professional development opportunities, and while we didn't end up changing the contract with regard to those, we did sort of put in place representatives at the ESP, a mechanism for representatives at ESP to sit down with Joanne Goddick at the beginning of the year and plan out what professional development opportunities would look like for the support staff. Does anyone have any questions before we?
I wanted to confirm about how many people are covered with this contract?
You would ask that question?
Sorry?
I don't have it in front of me. Trying to think.
You know, David?
I think we were in the, between 40 and 50, is that right?
Oh, it's more than that. It's more than that, because there are...
It's the paraeducators.
It's all, it's basically...
Librarians, custodians.
I don't recall, I should, but...
So, job titles...
It's about 80 health plans, I will tell you that.
So, job titles are paraeducators, custodians...
Interventionists.
Interventionists. Are bus drivers in there?
No.
No, bus drivers are non-union support staff.
Any other major titles in that?
Librarians, school librarians are in there.
Assistants, not the teachers.
Right. Yep.
That's it.
And then, just a quick question on that. I know this is a group that is really paid on an hourly basis, correctly?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
The wage increase in total is about double CPI, can you kind of just speak to that?
Yes, and part of that is, there are two reasons for that, really. There are a certain number of steps in the earlier part of the salary scale, so people who haven't been at the district as long, that are paid under the $15 minimum wage. And we didn't bump everybody up to that in one go, but we sort of estimated what that would look like over the course of the next few years, when we're expected to comply with that, and sort of put us on a path to that. The other thing is, we are really having a challenge, especially with paraeducators and interventionists. And LPNs are the other thing that are covered under this contract, so nurses that don't also have a teaching license, I'm sorry. So, we're having trouble attracting and retaining staff under this contract, partly in competition with other districts, but more so in competition with other jobs in the area, and that's been a real struggle. And so, we felt like we needed to bump up the pay in order to attract and retain the staff that we need to support our classrooms, really.
Other questions?
So, I'll move that we approved the terms of the contract for the South Burlington Educators Association Educational Support Professional Unit, as explained by Bridget.
Second thought.
And just by way of further discussion, I believe the support staff group has ratified this agreement already?
I said that at the outset, yeah, April 17th, they ratified.
Okay, any further discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. Thank you, thanks to the negotiating team for all your hard work.
Yeah, right, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 7, city and school collaboration.
Just to, I would say, probably the biggest item we have in front of us is the discussion about the Rick Marcott property associated with the stormwater mitigation. We had a meeting last week in which, between the city council and the school board, and conversations specifically about kind of where we are with the establishment of the 180 Market Street build-out plan specifically associated with the stormwater. And so, we're in the process of that continued work. We have a meeting set currently for May 8th. Again, this is the steering committee and the school board together to, again, do another update on where we are with regards to the stormwater. There's certainly with some new things that were determined at that meeting, and again, at the present time, we're working with our engineers to figure out what we need to do to comply and what options we have.
Yeah, I think, yeah, if I can elaborate on that, for those of you that either had a chance to participate in the steering committee meeting last, a week ago, Monday, between the city council and the school board, there was a lot of focus on the city's issue of treating stormwater, and actually, the school's eventual issue with that, as well as the 180 Market Street development and the definitive agreement that was signed in September. So, there's been some new information since that meeting. I think notably, one significant piece of information is that there is a drain pipe that treats some of the, I'll get all the locations wrong, but part of the parking lot, or much of the schools run off, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Onto Market Street. And the new information that was shared late last week with the superintendent, and ultimately with the school board, is that that drain pipe is going to be closed in the fall as a result of the Market Street project. So, that, one of the issues that we've asked the district's stormwater engineer to address is what the implications or impact would be of that drain pipe being shut off on the Rick Marcott school property. The other piece of information is, at the steering committee meeting, the city made a proposal that the city treat its stormwater requirements under the new municipal building, and that the school should figure out how to treat its own stormwater requirements. From the district's perspective, we've had some confusion as to, I'll say confusion, but I think it was very clear because the new parking spaces that had to be required on the central school property as a result, that were triggered due to the municipal building project, were going to be, the intent was that a minimum those be treated on the easement that the district was granting to the city. We also wanted to understand what our entire school property stormwater requirements might be over the long term, and our understanding is that those new regulations would be in place, I think, in 2023? Is that accurate? So, the scope of what the school has kind of authorized its stormwater engineer to address is really to understand what the district's needs are, both short-term and long-term, and what the options might be that we could go back and collaborate with the city on. Ideally, no additional school land would be required in any of the options, and that's the direction that we've provided our stormwater engineer. And then, to include kind of site balancing on the school property, but now to address the new drainage pipe issue as well, and what the impact of that closure might be. But in addition to that, since we heard the city's last proposal at the steering committee meeting to treat its stormwater on the easement under the municipal building, the superintendent has received a new proposal today that would look at treatment, storage and/or treatment, and I'm not fully up to speed because this is probably three hours ago, underground, but it would be underground on the school property. So, ultimately, it might have no impact on the fields and the use of those fields, but there would be a need for access to maintain those underwater storage and/or treatment tanks, I'll use that word, for lack of a better word.
Still an easement.
Correct. And it would require some kind of an easement. So, that proposal is inconsistent with the direction that we've given our stormwater engineer to look at minimizing any additional use of school property, but we're certainly looking to come up with options that we can collaborate on the city that will address the school's total stormwater needs to comply with the 2023 regs, but also to try to collaborate with the city on what their stormwater needs may be associated with the municipal building and its parking area as well. Is there, that was a long-winded...
Pretty good.
Clarification. Is there any addition from other board members based on your understanding of the most recent information?
I don't think so.
Okay. So, I think that's the status right now, and our hope is to actually bring at least a preliminary assessment of the district needs and possibly some options to the, to a steering committee meeting, which has been scheduled for May 8th at this point in time. I think that's, that's it there. Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, I mean, there may be, yeah.
I just wanted to say, Karen Sutherland, that thank you to Elizabeth and Bridget for speaking so clearly at the steering committee meeting. I think it was really important that you guys maintained your support of the school and what your role is for the district. And at this point, I feel like some of this is a distraction, and the city seems to be just grasping at whatever they can. Last week in the other paper, it sounds like David and Patrick Laduke and Kevin Dorn had meetings, and that feels not very transparent. I feel like, why would the city and this library and the superintendent be having these meetings? It's just really upsetting and a little bit confusing as to what the direction is, and at the end of the day, like, we need these 11 acres. That map that Bridget spoke to, that was brought to the PTO meeting at Central School in January, with the nine parking spaces. And that's what we voted on. So, I'm really just disheartened that this is where we're at right now. I mean, we need the school, if Chamberlain closes, which could happen, we don't know. We need all of the land, and these stormwater drains or tanks or whatever, it's going to be underground. I just feel like, what is this going to end up really being? This is just opening up another can of worms, like, if you can't do the project, you can't do the project. We need the schools, that's what's causing people to come to South Burlington. We are not going to keep pulling people in here with the current, just every day choosing some other project to pick up. So, please keep protecting the schools.
One thing I wanted to just correct, Erin, Pat Laduke and Kevin Dorn, there's a totally separate thing around a faith-based group that's not associated with me, with the district, is just trying to start a food shelf, and so, we're trying to do that. So, if there's, I didn't actually see that particular section of the other paper, but it's really, it's been ongoing to try to establish a food shelf in South Burlington, so I want to be clear that, you know, when I'm doing district work and when I'm doing other work.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a comment, just to support what Erin said. I think that it's a community project, it's supposed to be really good for the community, and children are a big part of that community, and it often feels, from start to finish, to the point that we are now, that things are being taken away from our kids, and it's just perpetuating, and it doesn't feel good, certainly, to all of the parents that I've talked to.
Well, speaking on behalf of the board, I mean, the district, the board and the council have a lot of mutual incentive to work together, so I think we're all hopeful that we can kind of come forward with a solution that addresses all members of the community, but thank you for that feedback. All right. We'll move on to Agenda Item 8. Oh, I'm sorry.
Noting that the next steering committee meeting is a week from today?
Yes, I think I announced...
Oh, okay, excuse me.
And I assume that'll be warned as normal, yeah. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 8.
So, board, again, this is my report, I have three things, Chamberlain School noise update, the multi-tiered systems of support, and enrollment projections. And the Chamberlain noise piece, you have a letter that's from the Burlington International Airport. Again, I didn't get that out in the packet because I didn't receive it until yesterday, actually, yeah, yesterday. And then, the multi-tiered systems of support is in, at your place. Again, I just provide, I'm providing a quick update. The enrollment information was in your packet. I don't know how best to do this, I'm not going to necessarily read this line by line, I'll maybe just do some paraphrasing and answer any questions the board has, but to the public, we've been in a long process around mitigating concerns related to noise at Chamberlain, particularly with the current jet traffic, primarily the airguard traffic. And so, we have been working hard to do our due diligence to make sure that with the arrival of any new aircraft, or any new noise, specifically the F-35 coming, we wanted to make sure we were creating a safe and appropriate environment for students. So, we've been working with the Burlington International Airport, and through them, the FAA, and some of their consultants. This letter kind of outlines where we are, and to the public, I mean, again, I'd like to be able to post this up so everybody can see it and read it. Obviously, the second paragraph speaks specifically about the airport was granted funding back in July of 18 to perform some testing. And that testing was done August 15th and 16th, and that was done, again, by a contracted group from the FAA to determine the existing interior noise levels of those spaces. Moving on, the results came back and basically said, we did not meet the guidelines for full sound insulation, but last sentence, we did qualify for insulation of a positive ventilation system so that existing windows and doors may remain closed at all times. Basically, what that means is air conditioning.
Air conditioning.
Yeah. And so, that kind of paragraph outlines that piece. I think important to note, obviously, the board knows this, but we did our own independent sound testing, and we did that live data, so we did it on two days, and we did it when the actual jet traffic was going, and we have those results to be able to compare. And what we've, what we understand generally is, it's fairly similar. What the FAA did, the consultants did, was actually have a speaker system outside the school, or outside each classroom, and they tested those with a certain sound level of a speaker with like, really loud gray noise, or whatever, white noise, and they measured the difference outside, inside. So, that's, again, kind of captures that second paragraph. The third really talks about some next steps, and there's a number of next steps that they allude to in this particular paragraph. If you go on to the backside of the, of top of page two, it really talks about that this next phase of looking at all of the options, for right now, is going to take 30 to 60 days, so we're looking at either a June 1st or July 1st timeframe. Last paragraph gets into the design of the system, so once they determine, you know, what kind of system, then they need to go out and do all of the bidding work, and then here, it talks about the bidding will take approximately three to six months, contingent upon extensive communication and coordination with us. So, again, I kind of, you take that out, so we're looking at September through December to do that. And then, they allude in their letter as well about, it's all contingent upon grant funding, which is a little concerning, because again, you still got to, even though you meet all the measures, you still got to qualify for the grant funding, a little bit concerning to me. And then, the second of the last paragraph is something that I've not heard before, but I also, I want to make you aware, is that there's a component in here that now says that it's contingent upon receipt of financial support from the school district and the city of South Burlington to cover local 10% share. And so, it's pretty hard to do any, from my perspective, it's pretty hard to do any sort of projected cost for either the current year or the upcoming year, when I don't have any idea of the scope of that work. We don't do this. So, that's kind of a takeaway question mark, big question mark for me around where we're at. Again, I'm in communication with the city airport leadership, I'm certainly happy to be able to have some more definitive information in this letter, and be able to share it with the board, and certainly with the public. Again, that's a pretty quick overview of the letter here, but certainly happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
So, can I summarize this?
Mm-hmm.
That Chamberlain might get air conditioning to be completed one to two years after the F-35 arrives, if we agree right now to pay 10% of the total project costs...
Of which we don't know.
Two years ahead of completion.
What we don't...
And we don't know what that is. Is that accurate?
Sorry, yeah.
So...
Okay.
Yeah. So, anyway, that's where we currently are. We've, again, been working to get as much clarity as we can. This is, again, as I said, a step in the direction of some clarity. I think fundamentally, what we're trying to do is ensure that the Chamberlain School remains an appropriate learning place for all students and staff to teach and parents to visit. And, you know, we've been at this for quite a while around wanting this. Again, in quick summary, you know, we're the customer, we're the school district, we're within the vicinity of the airport, and we meet the regulation guidelines for positive sound ventilation, I'd like to see that happen. So, again, we have involved some of our US representatives in this, and we, again, we can talk more about, you know, some next steps, but certainly making it available to the public, and to be able to be aware of where we are with the sound is, I think, an important part. Right now, what we know is the F-35s, again, this isn't only to F-35s, but we know that the airguard is typically the loudest, or has been, with the F-16s. They're coming in September, we hear maybe October, one of them, and maybe, you know, adding thereafter, it could be as late as November. Obviously, the later it goes, the better, because we have windows shut, you know, obviously, around, as we start the heating season, but I'd really still like to be able to have a better resolution than planning on the weather. And then, on the other side, obviously, it's a pretty long timeline.
So, I'm sort of thinking back to what the original goal was as we looked at noise mitigation at Chamberlain, and it was really to make sure we had a contingency plan in the event that we found noise, you know, disruptive to student learning at the school. And my concern at this point is, the timing of this proposal is really outside of what we know right now. So, I guess, I mean, along with, you know, getting some clarification on some of the maybes and no guarantees in here, are we thinking from an administrative standpoint about how to address anything during what might become a one-to-two-year window? Is that a fair question?
Mm-hmm. So, two things, when we looked at some short-term options, we looked at, you know, trying to go it ourselves with installing, but, you know, putting our own air conditioning in, but it was unlikely that, because if we did that, we wouldn't qualify or be able to be reimbursed under the federal guidelines and funding mechanisms. So, we kind of started down that road, is looking at an option to ensure, you know, a good learning environment. I think the second part, although I don't know exactly what the fly schedule will be, the number of airplanes, if they come in November, how we can organize and request flying schedules that may not interfere with the academic day, as a contingency as well. So, but first and foremost, we're the customer, and we'd like to see that we have a positive learning environment, an appropriate learning environment for our students at Chamberlain. What we do know is, again, a little bit more detail for some folks who haven't been following it, but every five years, they update this noise exposure map, what they also refer to as the NEM. And from the NEM, they developed this noise compatibility program. And from the NEM, they developed this noise compatibility program. 2015, they did that. And that lasts for five years, up to 2020. But because the F-35 was coming, there was a decision made to up that earlier, do that, you know, perform the new, the new assessment, the new NEM map sooner, of which they've done. We don't yet have the results back. But I do believe in Vermont Digger, I think VT Digger, it was commented that there was those contour lines or the sound lines, at least it must be in the draft form, seemed to be an improvement of what we have currently with the F-16 contours. But we don't have that. Again, that also put a little bit of a wrinkle in, in, in our grant funding because now they've also said you got to, you got to kind of comply with both of these NCPs, the noise compatibility programs. And I'm trying to say, well, it's not my decision, wasn't our decision to, to up it in the middle. I qualify, we qualified under the, the, the five-year, 15 to 20. We want to see this happen. So this is, this is where we are at the present time. And I think, again, important to be able to communicate this out to you and to the public on, on where we are. So.
I think the two questions I have, one is that Nick Longo refers to this previous letter talking about a 10% share. I think this is the first that I'm hearing.
Yeah.
About that, right? And then, do you know what he's talking about?
Yeah, so we've not been provided any sort of information on any local share.
Yeah.
It was first talked about when we, when, when I last met with them. But the purpose of that meeting was to get some clarity and actually some very specific, you know, in writing kind of next steps. So again, we were crystal clear.
Yeah.
And I don't, again, we haven't, I have not dug into, you know, is this typical? You know, how do, you know, school districts or entities even come up with what, what a, you know, put money aside for a local share of 10%?
Right.
I mean, it could vary. I don't know. You know, we've got, you know, that, that could, that could vary significantly. And, you know, we have taxpayer money, so.
Yeah.
That doesn't, that doesn't work.
And I think the other question was, how was the decision made to update the noise map earlier than, why was that done?
I think there was a, again, I don't know exactly. You'd have to, we'd have to ask, you know, the airport and the FAA. But I think because of the, the basing of the F-35 and some of the questions around some of the home buyout programs and things of that nature, I think it was, that's what sparked to do the, the update. Again, myself and Steve Wozlawski, previous board member, were part of attending those meetings. And those were, those were stopped as a result of going to do the, the new NEM maps and that they would resume once that comes to be. So again, that was one of the committees that the airport made available. Yeah. You have a second question too, Brian?
No, those are the two, about the letter and about the choice of the map.
So wouldn't we be able to get an estimate of what the cost would be from other similar installations? I think, could we look into that just to start getting some concept of what the 10% would be?
Well, it wasn't Dora Woodier.
It was actually that the airport kind of went out and asked one of our local contractor to give us an idea. But the scoping and the bidding and, and all of the parameters that are identified in here are not clarified in that particular proposal. Again, we could use it as a rough estimate.
Right.
But it, it can, it's pretty significant in difference. Because the other part of that, what it doesn't take into account from my perspective is if you're going to do the scope of work that might be needed, you, you know, in this, in a, you can't do it likely in the course of, you know, the summer vacation period. So it creates disruption to the student day, of which we have to figure out where we can put students in a, in a temporary basis and have swing space for a period of time. And that costs money. So, you know, that, that's, again, another added variable beyond just the cost of the upgrade. It's the disruption to students and what, where you're going to do that. So.
So are there other levers or other avenues? It's sort of, what I'm hearing from you is sort of, we have to just wait and go with this process. Are there other options?
Well, again, I've given you a few. I mean, there's, there's obviously some others. I'm certainly happy to hear some others from you or other brainstorms. But currently, it's really to push on the clarity of this letter, to make this letter known to our public, again, our parents and community members, and to our legislators, both local and, you know, in DC. And again, I'm speaking on behalf of the district, but we're the customer. And I'd like to make sure that students are in a place that's appropriate to learn. And I don't want to be surprised by, you know, a situation when we've been at it for, I've been at it for almost two years. So it's really to push that back on to them and to help them, us, figure that out together.
Yeah, I guess my concern is in, in the, you know, closing paragraph, it kind of throws the onus back on the district to basically say that timing is of the essence to determine how the local share costs are supported. So I would like to understand, is there an expectation that we have to make that commitment upfront? And how would we do that as a district to even move forward on the initial assessment?
Yep. Agreed. Again, I'm, I'm getting this, I got this yesterday. And so I, there's, there's a whole lot of questions in here. And I think it's good to have some clarity around so we can, can be specific in how we respond. Again, I think it's also important, you know, the board knows that I'm working with, you know, some attorneys and making sure that we're doing our due diligence in that regard. And obviously, that's certainly one area that's, is an important follow-up.
And I guess the other question I had is it references financial support from both the district, actually, I should say, from the district and the city of South Burlington. Do we know how the airport distinguishes those entities? Or is it one and the same from their perspective?
I don't, I mean, again, I think they're looking at them as two, two separate entities, the district and the, and the city. I don't know if that's a combined amount, you know? I think they're looking at the total share coming.
That certainly requires some clarification because we're both.
Agreed.
The district and the city are both named in this letter.
Yeah.
So we need to understand.
I think there's a significant number of questions in this, that are outlined in this letter that need, need some follow-up, for sure. And I, and I will post this up, you know, so community members. I didn't make enough copies for everybody, but I think it's important that it's available to the public so that we can respond to other questions that people might have.
So can we have this back on the agenda for next meeting?
As an update?
Yeah, tell us what the next step is, really define what the next step is.
Yep. When we get to our, we just got to remember that, Martin.
Well, then if the city is supposedly on the hook too, is this something that comes up next week at the steering committee meeting or is that already too big and packed?
I have a feeling that this person just doesn't understand school financing. But we can find that out with the questions.
Well, again, a lot of this, again, I don't, I don't know exactly the, the aptitude of all of the knowledge of, from them. But, you know, they're heavily guided, guided by the FAA and the FAA consultants, in this case, Jones-Pain. So, I mean, I'd like to think that they've done this work and can advise appropriately, but, yep.
Other questions or comments? All right. Move on.
So next is, next on the agenda is to update you on the multi-tiered systems of support and the schedule for specialization for the 1920 school year. And so what I plan to do this evening, and I had planned this all along, just to give you a little bit of an update on where we are. I suspect we have some folks that have questions about this and certainly want to respect them and, and questions that they may have. But I think what, what I would like to do, and again, I didn't make enough, I didn't make copies for everybody, but again, I'll make this available as well. And I apologize for that. But I think what I'll do is just kind of, I'll, I'll read through this, board members. Two things that I, I've provided you is just, you know, an overview on, on the MTS-S work. And then also a little bit, again, on additional, you've seen the same student data results, but I think it's important that you, that we also, you take a look at that as, as I kind of read through this because I'll make some reference to that. So MTS work at the, at the elementary schools. Some questions have come up regarding ongoing work to implement the multi-tiered systems of support or what we call MTS-S at all three elementary schools. So I'd like to provide a, a quick update to the work at this time. But also, I also like to take the opportunity to correct some inaccurate information that might be circulating among some families and provide the opportunity for community members to, to ask some questions or share concerns for us to take into account as we move forward with this work. I've kind of put this into some why and what and how. So first, the why is, you know, why do we need to change anything in our elementary schools? Great question. Again, you know, I'm really proud, I'm proud to be the superintendent in school and I'm proud to have administrators that work hard and teachers that work really hard and community members that work, you know, hard to support our students. But overall, we have, we, again, we have some of the best schools and we have some of the best test scores in the state. And so when, and certainly as you look at like indicators of the smarter balance, we certainly see that. However, the results for our economically disadvantaged students are consistently much lower than our, than our overall scores. And we've made really no progress in closing what we sometimes refer to as the achievement gap. So when we look at a year-by-year results, our cohort longitudinal results or our scores are trending downward or at best at the same place without any progress in getting more students to proficient each year. When we look at our elementary math scores specifically, we see roughly about two-thirds of our students are meeting or exceeding the proficiency, which compares favorably to the statewide, as I said earlier. However, this means that one child in three isn't meeting the proficiency in math, which means that we're not meeting our district ends for academic proficiency. And again, the board certainly has seen some of the work that we're trying to do with our, with our ends metrics in comparison. So when we consider that more than half of our economically disadvantaged students are not meeting the standard in math in elementary school, we clearly are not meeting our commitment to equity in this district, especially when we know how important it is to have strong fundamental skills in order to succeed in math in later years. Many of our teachers are saying that they are interested in content-specific professional learning so that they can deepen their expertise in either math or literacy. Current changes to special education funding, as you know, in Vermont, and guidance from a recent statewide report by the Agency of Education shows that we need to change the way we help struggling students. The report recommends that teachers with the deepest knowledge of content-specific techniques for teacher, teaching struggling students, provide support to these students. So the what? And stop me up if you have questions too, folks. So what are, what are the improvements that our schools have begun to work on? And so to, to respond to these needs, we're in the process of implementing the following improvements. And again, we've talked about this many times, the multi-tiered systems of support for all students. I do want to just quickly pause. We're going to talk about policy 2.1. And you'll see some things specifically on page three of eight where we talk a little bit more about the things that we're doing to help students out. But first bullet point, an increase in staffing of special educators with specialized literacy and math knowledge to provide support for struggling students. And again, you know that we were, we've added that to this, this current budget. And again, that started back in, you know, September. A guarantee that targeted intervention for students support development, the specific skills based on the data, and are not simply work completion. Again, we think that's critically important. An updated master schedule that has a minimum instructional time for math, literacy, and targeted intervention. Again, this is our special schedule. An expansion of teacher specialization in math or ELA, for example, at our elementary school in order to allow teachers to deepen their content-specific professional learning and also focus on preparing for fewer subject areas, example, math or ELA, science, social studies, et cetera. A plan to significantly increase content-specific professional development in the coming years with teachers, with teachers offered much more embedded professional learning to deepen their math and literacy content. The next is the how. So where are, where are our schools in implementing the process? This work is in process at all three elementary schools. Principals are currently working with teachers to resolve questions and concerns regarding their draft master schedule, teacher content and grade level assignments and staffing changes with special educators and peer educators. And after conducting research coordinated across all three schools and developing draft schedules will help some of those teachers and our elementary principals begin work, began work last month to engage all of our teachers in that design process before sharing the final decisions with families. It's important to note that these changes are building in over a 10-year period of our discussions of, of our work with our MTS-S work and that they won't be done either by the end of this year. We are committed to a continuous improvement work and we will continue over the coming years. A little bit, I provide a little bit of a timeline here about what we've done. Obviously, we started, you know, certainly in the budget process even before November, but.
Is this 18, actually? I'm confused. So.
Yeah, so November, November is 18, obviously.
Okay.
Right?
Okay.
January of 19. I should have put 18 there on November. So you can see in November, January, we had the special educator, special education proposed staffing changes, et cetera. And then I, I put some other pieces, just some, some typically, again, things that we've been also wrestling with some typical, you know, commonly asked questions for you also. I, I think the other part, just quickly to go on to the data, again, I want to, again, I'm, I'm proud of the work that we're doing and I'm proud of our students, but we do have a fairly significant, as I said, gap. And when you look at the information that I provided you, again, we're, we're certainly above when you look at Vermont. We're, we're well above in grades, this is our 17, 18 data, this is looking at district-to-state comparison in math. 64 versus 52 for grade three, 60 versus 49%. But what I'm specifically talking about, and I've struggled with this all of my career really, is that we've got, you know, we've got 60% of our kids in grade four that, yeah, that's great that they're meeting or exceeding the standard, but we've got 40% of them that aren't. And so what are we doing to help? I've heard loud and clear from teachers over the years, and you know, our community has been extremely supportive to calendar changes where we have late starts or early dismissals so that we can have the embedded professional development. But it's a heavier and heavier ask for our teachers to be experts in every single content area, specifically in math and literacy along the, along the way. So we're trying to lessen that load and allow for a deeper, deeper opportunity to go a little bit deeper with those classroom teachers. But certainly in, in the sheets that, that are provided here, when you look at the economically disadvantaged, you know, that, that gap is there. And of course, that certainly affects all students. So this is our hope to continue our work to allow for this specialization, which allows for us to address those things. So I think, again, I don't know, I don't know all of the, the conversation, but I know that this, this one out is like departmentalization. You know, we're changing elementary schools to look like, you know, the high school where they're going to be going from one class to the next class. And I want to say that we think, you know, having good positive role models for students is critically important. We currently go to art, music, and physical education and library. Those folks are critically important. And so it's not that we're adding twice that number in there. We're, we're focusing in on, you know, a, a teacher who has deeper knowledge and can go deeper on professional learning so that we can deliver the best possible outcome. And again, my desire and hope would be that as we continue to move forward, we're going to begin to see the narrowing of this, of this gap. And so, you know, that's essentially where we, where we are. I would say implementation, the process, is a little bit, will, will probably be a little bit different at schools. We're trying to get information out. We're, we're seeking information and questions from teachers. And that's where we are. So we're, we're, again, wanting to make sure that we're doing our due diligence as we, as we move forward. So again, I think you probably have some questions, Elizabeth, but I don't know, maybe from board first and however you want to handle that.
Yeah. I mean, one of, I got a quick question, which is how, oh, I'll, I'll recognize myself first. No, it's the, we've gotten some communication from the community that refers to departmentalization. Can you distinguish specialization from departmentalization?
Mm-hmm. So when I think about departmentalization, you know, although I don't think this is, this is not true of the high school, but you think of departmentalization, you've got a Department of Science or. but you think of departmentalization, you've got a department of science or, or language arts or, you know, social studies, et cetera. I see that kind of as departmentalization, like you're going to have a math wing and a science wing and things of that nature. That's kind of what I view as departmentalization. Specialization is more, and probably similar to our art, our music, our physical education, right? Where we send students off, obviously in the older days, that was, much older days, that was actually something that a classroom teacher did, physical education and things of that. But we've specialized over the years and we think it's critically important, not to specialize in everything, but certainly math, which we know is a much deeper, you know, competency that we need to be focused on. And I, and we also feel language arts, that's more specialization. So that's my quick, quick response.
Bridgette beat me actually, so I'll wait.
Bridgette.
I know, but I won't, I'll, I'll, I'll ask one and we can bounce back and forth, how about that? I guess my question, my first question is, what is the information or where does it, the information come from that says that this is the right intervention to change this equation in terms of proficiency? Where is the data or the study or the, the background information that says specialization is the way to go? I mean, a lot of the, granted, I'm not a teacher myself, but I've done a lot of reading and a lot of reading talks about how especially in the earlier years, kids need more focus on social, emotional, you know, learning and all of that so that they can access their education better as they go through their school years and that an overemphasis on specialization at all in academics can harm them later in their school career. Second of all, it feels like it's going away from what we talk about in terms of 21st century learning where everything is integrated and everything is, is more about experiential learning that is tying in all of these different things. So my question is, how did this sort of crop up as the solution to this achievement gap when it feels like it's going against a lot of the other things that we've talked about in the district?
Yeah. So social, emotional learning, again, is, is at the core of everything that we do. I mean, I think we want to make sure that there's an understanding around the importance of social, emotional learning and relationship and trust building amongst our staff and students. That's critically, that's a fabric. And often I will, will draw out a picture that's kind of Maslow's hierarchy of needs, but put in some of these foundational things that we know are critical. In order for kids to be able to learn, we have to make sure that they're in an environment that's, that's appropriate and comfortable for them. Those are kind of the S, those, those social, emotional learning. But there's, there's many other components in, in that foundation. If we, if we don't take care of that, then we're, it's more difficult for us to, to get to the higher order of thinking skills. So that to me is an important component. And I, we're not, we're actually, we're not doing anything significantly different than what we are doing today. Those relationships, you know, still stay consistent. Their, their homeroom, their, you know, their, their start of their day begins in the same place. Their end of the day begins in the same place. It's, it's all the same, right? When we, when we talk about those kind of programmatic places. But one of the things that we know is that, again, you could be, your background could be more in mathematics and it's nice to be able to take advantage of, of a coach, you know, a co-teaching environment or a teacher that would do that and be able to do it in the most appropriate way. Looking at kind of that universal design approach where I'm looking at students that may be struggling and what might they, their approach may be needed, may, may need to, to the higher level students in that particular area. What we know is that when we ask teachers to specialize in everything, right? It's, it's difficult and the expectations around math and language arts has certainly grown. And we hear it, you know, we hear it when we're trying to do our late starts or early dismissals. How much, again, if you're an elementary classroom teacher, there's a heavy load there to try to stay on top of everything. And particularly that heavy load is in math and LA.
Can I ask you a quick question though? Because in a, a different, you had sent us a little bit of information before this, this packet that you put at our place this night. And in there, there seemed to be a distinction that teachers were frustrated that there were so many initiatives and they were asking for more content-specific professional development. Maybe I misunderstood it. I, I understood that to me to mean that they were looking for less of the, all the different initiatives that are going on, state-level mandates and, and things that are not somehow academically related or content-specific. I didn't, maybe I misunderstood what was meant in that, that packet. I didn't understand them asking for a deep dive in one specific subject, more just, I want to focus on content and what I'm teaching as opposed to all of these other initiatives that are kind of being developed constantly at the state level and then being pushed down to us. So maybe I misunderstood that, but I just wanted to understand that better.
Well, I, I think there's always a caution, you know, around what might be coming down from the state and requiring mandates. And you know, there's some distractions there, obviously, both funding and, and programmatic ways in which we adhere to those. But I think when you look at the distraction, I don't, I want to be careful because, you know, social, emotional learning is a critical, as I said earlier, a critical foundation to be able to learn. Same thing about understanding diversity, equity, inclusion is an important component so that we're, you know, meeting all kids at the right place. Those are kind of those foundations. If we don't have those foundations, you know, solidified, then it's really hard for, for us to be successful with students as they progress in their learning. So, you know, again, I kind of go back to that, that foundational need. And again, we, we, you know how important it is for us to be a welcoming place for all students, to be excited to come every day and to learn. And we have to make sure that we don't lose that balance. And, and those are some of the, what I would say, non-negotiables. You know, we've got to make sure we're being that welcoming environment and we're aware of where kids are coming, you know, and socially and where they are, you know, if they come from different communities, et cetera. So that's an important part of it. It doesn't mean, however, that we're, and again, I think that can be misinterpreted that we're into too many other initiatives, right? But what we know is that, again, part of our data tells us this, is that we're not meeting the, the needs of, of a good population of our, of our students. And we can do better.
But where's the data that says that this is the right way of going about it?
Well, so there's, there's a lot of work that's gone on here. And again, I'm not going to highlight all of it, but in your packet I did, I am, you know, pointing out a couple here that, you know, helping students, schools and students thrive. This is again, the DMG report. There's a lot of research that has gone into it. It's, it's something that, you know, is really looked upon as best practice. There's a lot of schools currently that are doing this. You're, you look like you have a question.
No, 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 go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, the DMG report, which again, you know, has, is widely known and we've been at it for probably more than a year. And we've been using that as, you know, important benchmark. Teachers as well as administrators have been, you know, working on that. Many of, many of our partner schools are also, and we've looked at some of their outcomes. Again, looking at their, their outcomes and how their students are doing is also an important benchmark for us as well.
Who are the partner schools?
I'm not going to be able to hit all of them. I know that we've had a, a group of folks that have toured a couple of schools, other schools that we've gotten data from. I know Williamstown is one school. Again, it's much smaller, but again, they've got some embedded practices around the DMG and looking at how they are doing it. So again, we, there's, there's other examples, but there are schools out there that are doing it. And, and there's a lot of schools in Vermont that are doing this. And I think it's also important to say that we've been doing this too. We have, we, we as a district have been doing this. We've had multi-age classrooms over the years and we've had, you know, I'm a, I'm a three, four multi-age and I take all of the math students, right? So we have some history here in the, in the district where we've been, we've done the specialization. So it's, it's not new. It's, 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 again, multi-age classrooms probably back in the day were, you know, a combination of balancing enrollment sometimes, affording opportunities for those fluctuations. And we felt that it was a good, it was an okay practice too. And again, so again, there's some history there as well.
Do we have history though, all the way down to kindergarten, first grade, second grade level with, with specialization in our district? Have we?
We don't, we don't in this district. We, we've done some multi-age K1s over the years. So, you know, there's some, definitely some history there. And I want to, again, be careful because when we sometimes go down in the lower grades, we want to say, well, do you really need a high level, you know, you know, high level math instruction there? And the answer to that is yes, right? The foundation for those beginnings are critically important around recognizing the basic numeracy and the processes that kids are going through. So it, it is important. And certainly as, as you continue to move forward, you know, up into our fifth grade category, the, the math, you know, and the ability to respond to students and to direct them accordingly is important that you have some strong aptitude there as well, of which we want to make sure professional development is, is strong and embedded while at the same time, we, we're trying to be sensitive to, to that load that we put on teachers.
Go ahead, go ahead, Brian.
Well, it's following up on yours anyway. I'm curious again about the data. I'll certainly check out this article that you provided. But I remember, for instance, when you were suggesting that the fifth grade go to middle school, Stuart Weiss put a lot of articles showing, you know, this can work, here's where it has. Have you seen, I guess the first question is, what problem is this trying to solve? Is it the issue of kids not performing as well as they could? Is it specifically about these economically disadvantaged kids? And if so, have you seen data in this report or elsewhere that suggests that this actually addresses that or improves it?
So the answer to that is yes. The, the definite research that we've done does address that. But it has to be done with some fidelity around, you can't just do it without having, you know, the foundation for professional development expectations, right? You've got to have the right, the right, you know, ingredient to make that work. So that was, that was, again, on the DMG report. Second part was?
The main thing is the data question.
Yeah.
I would like to see what these results have been like and where they've happened and how they improved. And I'm sure other people would too, you know.
And Brian, and I think it's fair, again, this is our report, our data. And I'm, you know, I, this has been provided and I've provided it again. But, you know, for me, as, as, as a, as an administrator in the community, you know, when I look at the disadvantaged, when I look at all students, you know, when I look through sixth, you know, sixth, you know, third, fourth, and fifth grade, you know, and again, we're touted as doing a really good job, right? But I have to ask you, do you really feel like 73 of, of our students is, is really good?
No, of course not, but this, this address that.
You pushed at me on, on kind of the academic component. And so we've got 38 percent, you know, in third grade of our kids that are disadvantaged, that are not meeting it.
I think the data though, that Brian's referring to is the underlying, understanding, the underlying research that says specialization is the best solution to close that gap.
Yeah, very much, yes.
Well, again, I, I think, again, this is.
Yeah, or for example, is it a different curriculum? You know, we've got a curriculum that we buy for math, for example. Is, is it a curriculum issue? Is it a specialization issue? What is the issue that best addresses this, where people have had success addressing it? And I guess my question too, not to jump ahead, is, is just, if some teachers were asking for it, what are the concerns of the teachers that are pushing back? Because my understanding that the pushback really started with certain teachers who, who were not on board with it. And I would just like to understand better what their concerns were and why they're not on board.
So, so, so are we. And that's where we are right now, is that we're working with teachers and staff to understand what their questions and concerns are. And that's important to me because it, it's critically important that, what I'm, I'm just going to say, we have some move-forward criteria, me, right? That I want to make sure that, you know, people are having their questions answered. And right now, we're at the teacher and staff question. And I want to be able to get to those. I think that's critically important. If we don't have the support of, of our teachers and the professional development need, then we're not going to be successful. So that said, I, I, I do want to keep coming back to what we're doing currently, although we've been doing some, trying to do some different things with professional development. And thank to the community and the parents for giving us some additional time. But we're not a district that's been sitting on our hands trying to just say, we're okay with this. We're not. And again, of, of our students that are not economically disadvantaged, we're not meeting the needs of many of them. You know, so when you say one out of three, you know, that's, that's big. And I want to make sure that every student, you know, in South Burlington has a successful pathway. And so what we're doing currently, I know people want to say is really good. You know, we're doing, we're doing really well in the state. But I don't really care about the state. I want to, I care about our kids and our community here and I, I do care about the state. But I care about doing a better job and, for, for all kids. And I want to make sure we're answering the questions. I want to make sure we're, we're thinking all this, all that through. So again, I want to give you an overview. This was kind of a planned, and I know there's some feedback that's gone out that, and again, I'm happy always to have people at the board meeting. I know you are as well, to, to receive feedback and, and help us along the way, so.
Could we just request them though, that Mike provide us with some articles?
Yeah, sure. Again, this is not, this is not, this is not a Mike Martin or a Dave Young only, you know, or, you know, a Pat Burke or, you know, Holly Ruhel. This is, this is us, you know, we're, we're, we're committed, I think. We have good examples throughout this school system where we've, we've not been status quo, right? We have programs that are running in this district that are different than most. Because, and we're trying to make, we're trying to make sure that we're meeting needs.
No, I named Mike only because it was Stuart who provided all the articles last time. I thought he might be best positioned to do so.
Absolutely. And I, my job is to make sure that you guys are being informed and, but you evaluate me on meeting the ends. And I, and I, you know, obviously had this as a targeted date to, to give you an update on where we are with MTSS.
My turn? Yeah, thank you. So I'm looking at the back page, the, the list of concerns. And one of them, I, the top one is, do the elementary teachers support it? And, and you've got a bit of a split there. I'd like to know what the proportion of the split is and perhaps you could bring a list of what the particular concerns are from the teachers who oppose it.
So again, we've done surveys, you know, we've gone out with surveys and we're trying to make sure we're, we're getting that feedback. And so again, I think it's really important that you see that we've got folks that have a fair amount of questions. People are supportive but need, need a little bit more. And we do have people that, not yet, they're not there yet. And so that's, that's again, our data and we're working through that. I just think it's important that you know that we surveyed. I'd rather not get into, you know, sharing that outward right now. We're trying to make sure that we're doing, I'm doing our due, the due diligence to make sure those questions are answered as we consider and our, our pathway forward.
Yeah. Okay, so, so we're not there yet on that. Okay, I want to move to my next.
Well, we are, Alex. I mean, I, we've conducted the survey and we have, we have the questions. But, I mean, I'm being clear that I don't have 100% support yet. We're working through the, the questions. And I think we all know that change sometimes is hard, whether it's small or big. And I don't want to say this is small or big, but, you know, change is hard. And we're really trying to honor and, and be good listeners to our, to our teachers.
Yeah. My next question is the second to last one. What about the transitions of having students move to class, from class to class? I was under the impression that, that teachers were going to be moving from class to class. And, and I guess I envisioned having, you know, an ELA humanities, not, I don't know, want to say specialized, but focused teacher and a science, mathematics-focused teacher pairing up and alternating from one class to the next as each teacher teaches the two classes. Is, is that envision not correct?
Exactly how the transition will happen could be a little bit different, given the spaces in the, in each of the schools. But as far as, you know, making, making those changes, again, we, we make transitions currently now, you know, as students go off to art and music and physical education and lunch and recess. So, you know, how we do that is, is important to the transitions. We also know that transitions aren't bad for students. And sometimes if we, you know, the opportunity for some movement and, and some of that is also supported with research. Again, I, I want to be careful that we're not moving them and that transition time is so significant that it takes away from instruction. So again, it could look a little bit different at each school, how the math person enters into the classroom or the students move to that classroom. But the, the idea here is, is not to have huge amounts of time in transition as again, to make sure that we're still staying, you know, on top of our, our available instruction time.
Okay, I guess another concern I have that, you know, every time I see an elementary classroom, it's very much personalized. And you're going to lose the ability to do that if you have kids going from one class to the other as if they were in middle school or high school.
Well, first, they're not, the plan is that they're not going to move a ton. They're still going to have their own classroom. And it's, who's to say that in their math area, they can't have their own personalized, you know, you know, connections as well, right? So again, and, and you're not going to have, they're not going to have hundreds of students, right? It's, it's got to be a doable number of students to support, to support their, their work, right? So again, I look at this as an opportunity to build on relationships and allow for a deeper understanding. And again, we, our teachers have been working really hard. Our teachers are, are great.
Oh, yeah.
An elementary classroom teacher has had the responsibility to do a lot. And we put a lot on them to learn in depth a lot. So again, if you're the classroom teacher, this. So, again, if you're the classroom teacher, this could come as a little bit of a breath of fresh air that I still have to know what's going on in math because math language is important when I'm in language arts, right? But I don't need to have all of the most updated best practice every single time, right? And that allows me to, to actually not have to prep for the same amount that I did, that I'm doing currently, right? So, there, there's a little bit of an advantage in that. There's a little bit of advantage in how we distribute and continue on P, professional development, on how we get everyone through everything. So, there's some efficiencies, but more importantly, you know, targeted at our more specific outcome that we're trying to, that we're trying to get at.
Doesn't it add a layer of complexity to administration as well, though? In terms of, for example, this year, if we need to move a teacher from another school or another grade to cover a leave, for example, doesn't it add another complication that teachers are now specialized teachers as opposed to sort of, you know, jack-of-all-trades that can be moved around a little more easily?
Yeah, I mean, I think any time we have a, a teacher that's out, you know, it's a disruption.
But not even just a teacher who's out. For example, a school that has, you know, for example, a bigger class in a, in a specific grade, and we need to move resources around accordingly, we would now have to think about, okay, not only which is the right teacher to move, but do we have the right teacher that has the right, you know, is it math or is it ELA or, you know?
No, I, I think it's, it's a fair, it's a fair question, Bridget. But I also want to say that's maybe, that's not, that the reason not to do, you know, what we would say, an improved practice to make sure students are, you know, getting more of what they need to be successful. And again, I think, it, yeah, it adds, adds some complexity to say, we've got to make sure that there's not a hiccup in that class when somebody's out for three days a week or whatever the case may be. And we're going to have to work to get a sub, you know, a sub or a long-term sub that has, has the, the aptitude and the background that we're looking for, right? Not dissimilar than we do currently with content-specific folks in the middle school, science, math, or at the high school, you know, physics, et cetera, when we have somebody. We have to work hard at that. No question, there's some, there's some work there.
Can I ask one more question before I stop monopolizing everything? What was the decision around when to bring parents into this conversation? Because it feels like information was pushed out in a pretty disorganized way, more in a reactive mode. And, you know, at what stage of the process, was there a conscious decision about, like, what stage of the process do we need to get to before we bring parents into the conversation and, and into the loop? Because I think a lot of people were surprised, you know, that it's, it's May and this is a pretty big change for fall. And, and people are, you know, right now, busily filling out, I know I am too, filling out those, you know, information about placement and, you know, those kinds of things that people are really thinking about next year. And now, this is kind of a surprise. And so, I, I just didn't know what the, the communication plan had been or what the thought was behind it.
So, again, you know, MTSS has been upon us for a long time. And we started out the year with really the idea to, to move towards this. But we had a lot of work to do, you know, to, number one, the research, the planning, the communicating, the sharing with teachers and responding to their questions. And I think certainly right now, I think we're a little behind that. And so, in every step of the way, we've always felt that it's critically important, you know, for our, for our parents and guardians to be informed. So, and, and some people might say, you know, again, I, I feel like, yeah, the, the year's coming quickly to an end. But, you know, we're in May, we still do have some time left. And again, I want to, I'm trying to be sensitive to the implementation criteria that needs to happen in order for successful implementation. So, that, that still remains critically important to me. Questions from teachers need to be responded to. Community members need, you know, parents and guardians, you know, in some cases, students need to be able to be responded to. We've got to do that. So, that's, you know, and I, and I stand committed to making sure that that's, that's done. So, again, I think, you know, this is, again, this was part of a planned meeting, you know, for me to update the board. I, I know that some folks, you know, it's not that this is a secret, but I know that some misinformation has gone out around departmentalization, you know. I don't, I don't want to claim to know all of the, you know, the, the words that, you know, have gone out to explain it. Again, I, I know you want to let others speak too, but, I mean, the bottom line is, we're, as a district, and I'm committed and I'm currently not happy with the outcomes that we have. And many of you on this board that I've had a while to be with have, have known that. And, and we can do better. And we have to continue to ask the question and work hard at making sure that we can do that. And so, here's, here's where we are.
Yeah, I think, I think one of the things I'm hearing as I sort of summarize this, first off, you know, a reminder to the board and the public that we really charge our superintendent to deliver on the ends policy. And as a result, we often do not dive into the weeds on a lot of issues, but really hold David and the administrative team accountable for the, really the results, the outcomes. So, that, that's often a, a area of tension between the board and the superintendent. And I think we try to do that respectfully. I do think when the board gets community feedback or questions, it, that does create a level of dialogue that, you know, isn't necessarily consistent with policy governance, but it does allow some clarification and opportunities for what I characterize as continuous improvement as at least it results to interfacing with the community. So, I am hearing a couple of things here, and we'll open this up for some public comment, although it wasn't, we don't have a lot of time on the agenda, so we'll figure out how to deal with that. But I do think there is a request for additional access to research articles that really help us understand the underlying research, that specialization is the best solution. And the solution or the problem that I hear is being addressed is the achievement gap largely focused on economically disadvantaged students in our district. Is that accurate?
Mm-hmm.
I'm also hearing that we've, the board's had a lot of education over the years on MTSS. I'm also hearing that specialization at the elementary level is an integral part of successful implementation of MTSS. Is that accurate? But I don't recall hearing sort of why that has been the case, and I'd sort of couple that with the first interest in reading some additional information. I'm also hearing an interest in maybe just kind of a summary that pros and cons or advantages or disadvantages for teachers and for students have been considered. And obviously, where an issue is anticipated that might be disadvantageous to either group of, of folks, sort of how those would be dealt with. So, I think, you know, half, half of dealing with change is anticipating where you're going to run into bumps in the road. And then what I'm also hearing is how this is going to be operationalized, and that may deal with some of the issues of advantages and disadvantages, but really understanding what the plan is to operationalize this within the schools and, and the communication that would go along with that. Is that fair from the board's perspective?
Yes.
And that, I think, if it would make sense to really just provide some of that information on a future agenda, but also anything in the interim that the board could kind of educate itself on.
Absolutely.
So, with that, I'll open it up and we'll figure out based on our agenda for public comments or questions. Yes? And if you could identify yourself, please, I'd appreciate it.
Laura Smith. I have two little boys at Orchard, second and third grade currently. I just wanted to kind of state or just ask the question, you know, when are parents going to be informed? Because if teachers hadn't reached out, we still don't, this is the first time we're receiving knowledge, so that's a concern right there. And this is a huge change. And I would think that such a big change would be something that you would have community feedback on, and more importantly, teacher feedback on, because they're, they're in the trenches with our kids. If we're so behind, why are we rushing to implement it for next year? When it is May. And if we're going to come and talk about this again in June, the school year is over. And it's, from what I have read, and I haven't had a chance to read a lot, although I would like to see the research, it's very important that the teachers have a lot of professional development to make this successful. But beyond that, for me, you know, the big thing was the, the budget for next year specifically had a note about a co-teaching model, and you mentioned it earlier. And so, that's a particular buzzword for me. It's something that's, I have experienced at Orchard. Both of my boys have very much benefited from the co-teaching model there. I think that might be what you're referring to as specialization, but it's very different than what we've experienced. And so, I'm curious as to why you felt you need to go outside of our community test results and research if you haven't looked at, or have you looked at the co-teaching model that exists at Orchard? Because it was extremely successful for both my boys. One that has access special, special education and one that hasn't. So, one that might be in that twenty percent of test scores, he just took his first S-Box, I don't know. But it's very important to me that every kid receives the education that they need. And that model really did do that for my children.
So, I'm worried, like, am I going to be able to respond to all of them? And I do want to. And, and so, I'll take note. And I, I would like to ask Elizabeth, that others that maybe don't want to ask, I mean, send me an email, copy Delana Gilroy, and I'll do my very best to get, get back to people, either call them or email you, or set up a time to meet with, with groups or whatever the case may be as we take into, your questions into account. So, again, otherwise, I'm worried we're not going to get other folks the opportunity.
Could you just address the co-teaching question?
Yeah, so, I think, again, everything that we've done in this district, we, we've been looking at the data, you know, that has existed at every, at every school and every grade and with every classroom teacher. And so, we've, you know, we continue to disaggregate that data. Do I think there's opportunities for improvement in our data analysis? Yes, we're working at that too. But we definitely know that the co-teaching had some strengths in that, as I said before, when it allowed for some specialization in content-specific areas that allowed for a much more robust outcome for students. We do know that. Again, it's not one hundred percent because not all co-teaching had the same level of professional development. And the choice of the content area that one chose versus the other is a little bit different. So, there's some variables in there too. But yes, we've, we've looked at that.
Well, I'd like to see then, that data of the co-teaching model at Orchard, how that compares to the other data that you've looked at, to see what the difference is.
Yeah, and I think maybe for the interest of, of the agenda and the likelihood that this will show up on a future agenda, just for further education of the board at least of, of an administrative decision, it might be helpful to hear questions or comments and maybe just collate those into a, a collected response at this point.
Yeah, I feel bad because I know, I'd like to be able to respond. I'm, I'm not, but I know we, you don't all want to be here all night long. We have an agenda too.
Yeah, yes.
I'm Kristin Bishop of Leiperg. I've got two kids at Rick Marcott School. I'm also an educator at university level and been very involved in the scholarship of teaching and learning, implementing innovative teaching practices. I'm very sensitive to the argument that, you know, if it ain't fixed, if it ain't broke, don't fix it, is not a reason not to try to do better. I really strongly appreciate that. But what I've also found is, when making changes, you're really, your highest probability for success is to do it in an incremental way and not sort of big changes all at once. And so, I realize you're not really going to answer questions, but just maybe to keep in mind whether it would be possible to do this in smaller steps, ways of bringing it in, in ways that are, have the highest probability for success. For example, one of the concerns that I have been hearing a lot about this is that whether it's age-appropriate, especially for those younger grades, why not maybe implement it at the fifth grade level, reassess, see how it's going? What are your successes? What are your challenges? Fine-tune it as you go and then kind of bring it to the lower grade levels as you feel that you're actually seeing that success. So, just something to keep in mind.
Other questions, comments? Yes.
Erin Sutherland. So, I actually don't think that it's all just the economically disadvantaged students that are not performing. So, one is my son in fourth grade who is dyslexic. And a model, I think that we can do better. I've paid thousands of dollars because the school wasn't meeting our needs. And there was one teacher, until this year, there was one teacher that was able to work with him, that was actually trained properly. So, I think when the teachers are asking for this content, an elementary teacher should know how to teach reading and should know how to teach writing and should know how to teach math. And maybe some of those professional development days really do need to be more direct, not having our current interventionists, who I don't know what their exact training is, be teaching. But invite in Project Read, invite in Fonteson-Pennell, invite in Orton-Gillingham. Let's pay those money to have those teachers be truly trained so that they can, because I think these are, we can fix these problems, but not with just a big shift like this. I think in the K-two, those kids are really struggling with reading. And those teachers need more training because fifteen years ago, they weren't getting that training. You weren't being taught how to teach phonics. So, we just barely bought the Lucy Cawkins phonics this year? Let's wait and see how that works before we change it all back up. The teachers are just learning that this year. So, I think we need to just slow down. It's May and parents need time to process.
Yes.
Shane Mullerari. I'm a parent as well, not an educator. I come from a family of them. And this feels very late in the game for us, given just what we're hearing tonight. I have to just thank everyone who spoke up, but this almost feels like there needs to be a follow-up meeting where there's just a time to hash some of this out and truly hear people's concerns, know what the teachers are saying. Because I too worry, kids that are just barely meeting the standards at this point, slipping through the cracks, these are phrases used by teachers. I have two children that benefited from the reading specialties that they got. And I heard from kindergarten teachers that they're struggling, they're not supported well enough. The core curriculum has come down hot and heavy. And I don't know that the support for the classroom teachers were increased well enough at that point. And I just think there needs to be more talk, and it is late in the year. This would be extremely hard to imagine how it could get rolled out in time for next year. I just want to know who, how, how they're getting specialized, what the training is looking like, who'd be hired to do this, that sort of thing. This just feels late. We, we, we heard this from Orchard parents who somehow got information. It's, it's scary. It's, I have to say that.
Yes.
Your own words were that the implementation was, is so, is the most important thing. And yet, you've said that you're behind the game and it's May and you haven't done enough professional development. The teachers only found out this month. So, by your own words, you're not ready to start this in the fall. And I think it needs to wait until, until you're ready.
Thank you. Yes.
Alice Mills. I have two kids at Rick Marcott. And I just have more of a practical question as to how my second or third graders' day would look differently with this implemented as opposed to the way it's, it's looking this year? Like, will they be, I mean, I know you spoke about this a little bit, but will they be moving classes all day or is someone coming to them? And how long are the periods of time? And, you know, just like on a very practical, day-to-day level, how will their day be different from what it is now?
Right, in the back?
Kim Chittenden. I am a parent.
Would you mind standing up? Sorry, we're...
Sorry. Kim Chittenden. I am a parent of two kids at Rick Marcott and one at the middle school. I'm also a fourth grade teacher at Colchester. I have concerns about this model. I love Rick Marcott, I love our schools. I love the fact that when I walk in, my kids' teacher, I value myself for knowing all of my kids. I know their strengths and their weaknesses, and I can often bridge, bridge that gap because I do teach all subjects and I differentiate my instruction. I guess my, my question would be, how does this look different with the new model versus what you're currently practicing in terms of MTSS supports, titles, special ed? Are the kids going to be grouped based on skills? You can meet that forty percent? That scares me. Is it still going to be heterogeneous? And the transitions, although there is lots of research in terms of body breaks being good for kids, I know that for some kids, too many transitions are disruptive and that happens to be typically are more fragile learners. I just wanted to put that up there.
Thank you. [applause] Any other brief questions or comments? Yes.
I'm just wondering, like, if we're looking at our current curriculum, like, how is this model, like, going to change what the kids are actually absorbing from the current curriculum that we're using? My name's Tara Pineda. I'm a first grader at Rick Marcott. And before I even heard about this model, I've had concerns for months about just like our base curriculum and what the students are able to learn. Like, it seems to me that there's holes somewhere. My child has struggled with reading since kindergarten and he was sent to this reading recovery program that did not work for him. He seems to be more perceptive to like an Orton-Gillingham or dyslexia type program that a lot of research is showing that's good for all children. But it doesn't seem like the literacy program that we're using, the curriculum, has like any phonics whatsoever currently. So it's just like, how will this model fix the problems and the holes that we already have? Like what, what's going to change from doing this? And also I'm just wondering, like, as other people have pointed out, we have, this is like four months from now. Like, how are the teachers going to be trained to begin implementing this in September?
All right, I'll take, like, four more questions before we end up.
Jessica Gates. I have two daughters at Rick Marcott. I agree with all of the questions. I particularly support having another meeting specific to this. I think there are so many questions and rather than sending an email along and just me getting feedback, I want to know the answers to all these questions together. I'm really worried about the transitions for my particularly fragile, introverted little girls who I think would struggle with this. I also want to know what they would be losing from gaining whatever they might gain. By bringing the 40% up, is the 60% gonna be, gonna come down to more of the middle? I, I want to know if they're gonna be losing more lunch and recess time because they already don't have enough time to eat or play? Or, and I also agree with the socio-emotional needs being really important and being able to form those bonds as young learners with their kindergarten teachers and first grade teachers and on and on. I think those are just as important as these other standards that we're trying to make.
Thank you. There's two over here and one here. So if you didn't raise your hand last time, you don't get to raise it again.
I think there may be more than that. So my name's Maura Graff and I have a kindergartner at Orchard Elementary School. And I want to echo a lot of what other people have said and say that I look forward to hearing the answers to all these questions. And my question is, what will be done differently moving forward with regard to communication between the teachers and the administrators and the parents with this decision and with others in the future? Because for me, the fact that the teachers and others took this measure of reaching out to someone to post information on social media because they felt as though their concerns were not being heard and that parents weren't being informed. And the fact that a lot of parents feel like this is the first time we're hearing about this means that something is broken in that communication channel and, and needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike Arum, Rick Marcott parent, fourth grade and kindergarten. I'm also a physician, medical educator and researcher. And I wanna sort of build on the comments that you just made. In my work as a researcher, one of the things that is so important when designing studies to try and understand the best way to move forward in medicine, we always convene stakeholder committees. And in this case, it seems like it would be appropriate to convene a stakeholder committee that includes parents, teachers, administrators, et cetera, maybe in a, in a more coordinated fashion to help roll this out in a way that works for everyone.
Thank you. Is this all futile? Is it a done deal and it's starting in September?
Can I answer that?
I said to the board about implementation, you know, that I want to be conscious of the implementation criteria in order for a successful rollout. So again, I think important feedback from the board. That's why I'm doing it to the board and you folks are important to that too. I want to make sure that I'm paying attention to all of the voices, all of the questions. And again, we're currently, as I said in the survey, we've received, you know, questions from teachers, right? And we're currently working through that and we have been. Again, I think, you know, and I'm not gonna speak specifically to, you know, somebody reaching out saying, having concerns, right? But, because again, I'm happy to have you here because I really care that moms and dads and guardians care about their kids. That's a beautiful thing. So I want to say thank you to come out. But we, I have decisions to make around how best to support all students in this, in this district. And I stand by that, you know?
My name is Vicki at Blenhamson, by the way.
Thank you, Vicki.
My kids go to Rick Marcott. And I just want to thank you for all of your hard work on behalf of children and I appreciate it. However, this is kind of a hard pill to swallow right now and I feel like parents aren't even supposed to know about it, but you do. I appreciate your willingness to speak with us and help us understand. And there are a lot of questions that have been voiced and I have a whole notebook that I can't even ask right now. But I would really appreciate the opportunity, I don't know if it's possible, to have a meeting for parents to understand it and, and maybe you'll be able to answer more of these questions. And specifically, I think it's so important, the question about, it's so simple, but, but so critical, how will that school day look? And I don't have an understanding of what, what is the system? Is it, you know, is it going to be literacy and social studies teacher, that one teacher teaches literacy and social studies? Does the literacy also include writing? I mean, everything in elementary is interwoven, so, or at least it should be. And so how do we pull it apart like this and still make it cohesive for the most delicate learners who are kids K to five? I mean, it just is so important. So it's big. I mean, can there be a meeting for parents so we can understand this better? That, that isn't so confined at a, at a school board meeting?
Well, I can't answer that. But what I can say is, I think, David, you've got a lot of good feedback and good questions. I'd encourage all of you who are here and those of, those who couldn't be here who might have additional questions or concerns to make sure those get communicated by email, either through directly to you or there is a school board email, which also is available on the district website. And I would just encourage David and your team to sort of listen to this feedback and understand how to best move forward with the initiative.
If there is going to be a change, we are going to have a meeting. This is our right as parents of the school to have a meeting before this change where you actually answer questions. So if there's a change, we're gonna have another meeting where you actually answer questions before the school year. Okay?
I think we've heard your concerns tonight. Thanks.
You didn't say we were.
No, I, I'm, I want to make sure all questions are answered before we move forward. And I pretty much, I've worked hard as a district to try to do that. I've met with, you know, some of you in the room on a one-on-one basis and, you know, obviously if that, if there's too many, then we gotta figure out a different way to do it. So I want, you know, I'm hearing you.
Just one additional question. I'm curious when the survey for the teachers was conducted. My understanding is teachers just found out about it.
There's, there's been a couple, probably two or three times that surveys have gone out, you know?
So just voicing concern that teachers, this has not been a collaborative process with teachers.
Yeah, and again, the survey, the survey provides us with information that alluded to those questions and-
Teachers have known about this.
Yeah, and many have, have positive support and some have questions, some also say, oh, I don't like it, you know? So again, we're, we're trying to really be sensitive. They're critical, right? I care about them deeply. They're critical to the-
And I'll just say, David, that is not the information that our teachers are telling us.
Yeah, and I-
That's the thing that's really important, David.
Yep, and, and you guys are a big part of that, that conduit between, you know, teachers too. I mean, maybe I haven't, I'm not hearing all of it. So again, you're, you're the sounding board and I want, I appreciate that.
I hope that parents, I hope that teachers are involved in this decision as well.
Can I just ask that the information that you're providing to the school board for the proficiency details, how this, how this study is rewarding and how it's gonna help us be provided to parents as well? So we can understand where you're coming from as, as the superintendent and educators?
I'm gonna do the best I can to get information posted up and follow along. Again, some of you maybe can't make all the meetings and if we do have a parent, you know, I have an obligation to make sure there's information available.
All right, we're about 25 minutes over our agenda. So why don't we move? Thank you all for, who came for that topic and your feedback. We appreciate it. And we'll move on to agenda item nine, master planning and visioning. Welcome. Yeah, sorry.
It's okay. I wasn't gonna say that.
Do you want to cover that? Sorry.
Yep. So board members, the last item was on enrollment projections and in your packet, in your packet is, are two things. These are, this is an update that came to us in late March on, from Cropper and I wanna, I want to say it's twofold, obviously, because it has information that's critical to our ongoing enrollment at our schools, particularly elementary. It also has critical bearing with master planning and visioning as well. I do want to make, in the, in the larger packet, I want to just go to the second page for you. And it's the live attend and map analysis. It's got a little bar here. And there's a mistake here that's noted that it has seven out of district. And this is in the, the Chamberlain area. That should be zero. Obviously zero in both because the upper box is a summary. But-
I was wondering about that, but that's not adding on.
Yeah, thank you. So the only thing I guess I would say to you is I would love, you know, just the opportunity for you to ask maybe some specific questions on, you know, on what enrollments are, are looking like to you, that you may have questions that you'd like me to answer. There's a lot of language in here. And I think most of you with the master planning vision, you have seen kind of the enrollment projections generally, you know, to the out years. But I think it's really important that they stay in front of us pretty regularly. So again, I don't necessarily, I don't know if you have particular questions, but you can certainly see where we are in, in the out years as we move forward up to 2030. Yeah.
So the question about unmatched is how, well, that leads me to ask, how many homeless students do we have and where would we count them?
Yeah, so they get counted in different places and again, we don't, we don't really take them out of that because they're, they're part of our enrollment capacity, you know? Those, the particular students that were there, we did not have a home, you know, home of residence. So that's why they were, we just, when we sent this in, it was quantified as, you know, we don't have an address. So they went into the out place, you know, or the, that placement sector.
Does that make up for most of the people or most of the students that are attending a different school? I was just wondering why, because I was surprised at how many we had attending schools that they weren't living in. Just because, you know, I understand a couple of years before I came on the board, there was, there was the issue with No Child Left Behind where two of the schools were allowed to place students at Central if they chose just because of how test scores and all of that shook out. But I would have thought that by now, a lot of that sort of noise, I was surprised that it was sort of going to different schools as well. It wasn't just a central issue. It was, it was sort of just mixed up. What is our policy in sort of allowing kids to go to a different school and are we providing transportation? You know, what are some of those things that are, are driving those?
So you're right about No Child Left Behind. When that came out, it wasn't that, it was basically the, the number of students that were eligible at Rick Marcott. It took them out of the equation to not meeting the standard because No Child Left Behind required everyone to meet the standard. But because of the numbers were so low, they didn't qualify, they were, they were not identified. So in the language specifically to No Child Left Behind with three equal elementary schools with all grades, we had to open them up as a choice. So we also said that we didn't think it was fair that a student could start, progress to third grade and then their child, their younger brother coming into kindergarten would split the family up. So we made some exceptions to that. So there's some residuals in there to that, to that ongoing process. In addition, we do have some opportunities to waive some students in where they've moved, you know, to another, to the Orchard District.
Okay.
But because they're in fourth grade, we think it's advantageous for their, along with transportation can be a component of that. We think that that's also good. And we do communicate that with parents and guardians around, you know, what their intentions are. So those are, those are kind of the buckets that, that we operate in and we review those every year. And they're required to write us a letter every year, of which sometimes we have to prompt them and ask them questions. And, you know, Meg, Meg is a big part of helping me with managing that too. So, yeah. So without, without, unless you have a specific question, I mean, I'll try to move us along. I think really important data connected to two things. We've got enrollment capacities going on. Orchard actually has dropped down a little bit from their projected 400 overcapacity. And we're looking okay, I think, on enrollment capacity right now with current staffing, on kind of what's registrations coming in for kindergarten. And then at the high school, you know, you know, there were overcapacity there. But, you know, it seems like, again, we're gonna be able to meet the needs there. We also have a large class size moving through the, the middle school. So there're gonna be some larger class sizes. I want to say seventh or eighth grade. I should know seventh or eights. I think it's, I think it's our upcoming eighth grade. We got some-
These are the upcoming eighth grades. I remember because one of our, one of my neighbors was in, she was in the fourth grade class that had to get an extra teacher added after school started and she's now gonna be a rising eighth grader. And that class has just been a big class since it was in kindergarten, frankly.
So we've done some different things to increase lower enrollment capacity. Because again, part of the problem is if you're a big class and you're moving always all, all through the system and you're always in a big class, you know, we tried to be mindful of not always a big class. We've added some, some resources to it. But again, right now at, at the middle school, we typically operate with eight core teachers, right? And they're, they're currently in the absorption of, of that number. And I'm sensitive to the teachers, but remember that it's, sometimes it's a one year and then you may have a significant downward number. And it's not always, you know, every year is a big, big year. So.
David, I was gonna ask, have we shared this with the city?
I have not shared this with the city yet. I think it's posted on our website. I'll make sure though that it goes to them. It's probably a good talking point for us in our, in our work.
That might be helpful. And then the other question is, I don't, I might have been too late for this, but I think there were two developments that were affected by, I think it was actually a lawsuit based on the number of homes that could be built on the properties. And I can't, you do remember Martin?
Spear Meadows.
Spear Meadows, right? Neighbor of David's house.
I think there were two, but did, did the reduction in those properties affect the projections at all?
They weren't permitted yet.
They weren't yet permitted. And that's kind of the rule, although it's a hard rule to follow because you and I and community members, as you travel through the community, you look, wow, that's, that's huge. You know, that's gonna be X number planned units. But until it hits the permitting, actually probably by the time they're doing that stuff, it's got permitting. So that's probably a wrong analogy. But there's a lot of proposed development going on that we have been diligent about with our demographer to identify those. But that was a specific question we asked as we said, hey, this is on the books or this is before the, the DRB. We like that to make sure it's counted in there. And the answer to that was not unless it's, not until it's permitted. So it does make sense for us to continue to keep updating this, again, with some reasonableness because there's costs associated with that. But, you know, incremental updates, but I'll definitely share with the city.
I was a little bit concerned about Orchard for that reason because there are some developments kind of on that side of town. And the, the report sort of has Orchard getting to a peak of 411 students. And though we were, we were kind of surprised last year that it dropped from where it was, but it was at 400 at one point already. And I, and I was just a little bit concerned about as it relates to our decision-making and that kind of thing. It, we can't turn on a dime. And so my question is whether this is giving us good enough insight or whether we need to sort of add a layer of insight on top of that based on what we do know about development to start sort of looking out a little further on our, because we, 411 really is pretty much the absolute maximum that we could handle in, configured as we are now. It would be really hard to do much more. So the question is, do we have any wiggle room at Orchard? If it, if some of these planned developments that aren't in here yet do come online?
to identify, now that we have those projections, before students enter the system, or enter a school, it's far better to, to inform the development, the homeowner, on redirecting before doing something that's, they're in the system and we want to redistrict, old words, you know? So, I recognize that that may not have a net outcome in yield, it's also a challenge in transportation, because, you know, we want to make sure that, it shouldn't be, you know, parent or guardian dependent to get them there, it's an obligation on our part, so we, we have to, we have to make sure we're figuring, but that's on, on us right now, is to say, given Orchard, is there a development that's going to come online, you know, you know, next January, I should go back and revisit those assignments, or the, you know, the map, if you will, where they're currently designated and redraw that, and we, we have some examples of that where, you know, this is not great, but you take a development and you kind of, you gotta cut it in half, and it's not great, because we'd like for kids to be able to go to the same school that live in the same community for playing, but sometimes there's a better demarcation than, than that, too.
My other question is about Chamberlain, I was kind of surprised just intuitively, about Chamberlain, because there was a, I can't remember, I think it was on page six, I want to say, of the, the actual report, they talked about the population of Chamberlain neighborhood growing faster than others, and I was kind of surprised, but there was a table that implied that, I guess.
Yeah, you're, you're in this one, I think.
Is that because of the O'Brien development?
Is it, is it just O'Brien? Okay.
Yeah, and I think it's in the summation, Bridget.
Okay, maybe I missed it.
Well, I guess, I guess the question is, are we going to lose any more houses because of airport buyouts, and perhaps not many?
Yeah, because I noticed in the assumptions, there was no assumption about F-35s or, you know, other impacts of that in the demographic projections for, for the neighborhood, and I, I was just kind of intuitively, and again, these are just observations, I'm not really asking, other than the Orchard one, just to start to be thinking about it, I'm not really asking for action, it was just surprising to me that there was sort of an assumption or an outcome that Chamberlain would be growing, given, given where we are with the F-35 and all that.
Yeah, I mean, it's most, again, as you know, I'm not, and I don't want to even begin to try to explain the demographic data analysis and, you know, all of the, the metrics that go into that, but live birth, housing stock, you know?
Yeah, I know, I mean, the outline.
Age group, you know, because, again, I've been a little bit more informed around the housing stock, the age of the current population and the, and, you know, and then how those houses are more, more rapidly turning over, and the current turnover that our, our more senior age population turn into positive housing stock for younger starter families, so that's part of, I think, some of that influx, but I'm, I'm outside my comfort zone to give you exactly the rationale without him here.
All right.
Okay.
Well, let's move on.
Thanks.
Master Planning and Visioning.
So, I'll just quickly start out, we had a, we had a meeting actually this morning, our working group meeting committee, and that involves Patrick and Carsten, the Door Whittier folks, Lee and Roberto, involves Bridget, help me out with the other people. Gary, myself.
Gary, I'm absolutely there, he was there today, so, yeah.
Corey is there, Robertic is there in terms of communication and information needs and that kind of thing.
So, in general, it's, this was really kind of a regroup, and to ask questions, and I kind of feel bad for Bridget, because she was put on the hot spot a little bit about, you know, where, where are we, and how do you, when am I move forward, what, what do you think the board needs, and again, this was really prepping for, for this evening, to give a, give a little bit of a summation about where we are and what we need, so, Bridget.
Yeah, so, what I was really hoping for tonight is a couple of things, one, to sort of talk about timing of the rest of the process, to sort of get that out there and see if we can't make some decisions, at least about the timing, obviously not making decisions about what we're doing, but timing, and to get better insight from the rest of you about what would be helpful or what you might need in terms of getting to a decision, and then perhaps getting a commitment for a couple of different aspects of information gathering from the rest of you, so I'll just sort of go through, sort of the, the clear thought process, and stop me if you have questions. So, one, the architects are, are working on their final report about the visioning, Phase Two, visioning, and that is really going to be mostly a summation of, you know, what's gone on in the process, the architects aren't really in a position to make a recommendation about what we should do, they're really going to summarize what's gone into all of this, and summarize the information that we've gotten out of those bits of the process. That report, they believe will be ready by May 8th, which would be a week ahead of our next meeting, which is scheduled for the 15th. What they really need from us, pretty quickly, is a decision about Phase Three, and how to structure Phase Three, and it really falls into not sort of picking one of those eight options, you know, which was, it was great to have all those different options, to sort of discuss the different aspects of them, but what they really need is where the board is in terms of, are we doing nothing, and sort of waiting to, you know, doing a little bit of stewardship every year and waiting further until something major happens that needs addressing? Are we focused on doing infrastructure only? Are we focused on doing sort of the, the highest priority educational enhancements, understanding that we're not going to get some of the highest priority ones if we don't dig a little bit deeper, or are we, as a board, on board, so to speak, with all the educational enhancements that have been identified as being needed in the district for middle and high school? So, they outlined for us a couple of different timelines, and one would be a vote on a bond in March, and in order to do that, they really need a decision from us in early June, so really at our first June meeting, in order to make that happen, because basically the, the timing from that decision would be June to November, early November, there would be a design team and a school district team working together to complete a design phase on a preferred option. November to February would be an informational campaign with the community, and then that would get us to March. A March vote would mean that May of 2020 and May to September, we would clarify the design, we would hone that design, and then basically, it gets us to starting construction in June of 2021, if we were to make a decision in June of 2019, to move forward in, in some general direction, and that would mean that by September of 2023, they would, of course, depending on which option we chose, because some of them had longer construction than others, but they would hope for a September 2023 start of school year in a new building, if a new building was the direction that we chose. Option two would be to delay that vote until November of 2020, so to delay until the presidential election in 2020. That would, those few months would delay us by a whole year, just given where timing falls in terms of start of construction and, and all those kinds of things, so it's a very similar process, but there would be a delay in terms of getting construction started, and that would push us back to September of 2024, in terms of having things completed and being into a new building, again, if a new building was where we went. So, what they are hoping to hear from us is whether we feel like we can get from point A to point B by a month from now, and whether we think that we can gather that information and everyone can have their questions answered and be ready to make that kind of decision by June, or whether we need to take the foot off the accelerator, understanding that that would be a year-long delay, and it would, of course, as they've talked about in their presentations, mean additional costs, because costs of construction and all of that go up over time. So, that's one question they had for us, and they were really hoping to get from us tonight, whether, what we think about that. Another thing that we are hoping to get out of tonight is, we think it's really important for everybody on the board to have toured the, both buildings, again, even if you've been in them a decent amount, it's good to go through them, sort of in sequence and, and sort of see the whole building, because I think all of us have a tendency to sort of be in specific places in them for different reasons, and it would be good to have a holistic view, so they were hoping to get some sense from other board members of times or timing that might work for them in the next couple of weeks, to really get into those buildings, to sort of help inform the process.
One thing on that, Bridget, we felt it was important that you actually get a chance to see it, you know?
During the day.
With student activity in it, right? So, either it's, you know, start of the morning, and again, both Patrick and Carson can identify some of those times, and, you know, we, we obviously don't want you to have to wander around, but it could be a student-led walk, administrative, you know, combined, but, you know, we would work to help meet your, meet your schedule the best we possibly can.
Yeah, it would be ideal if, you know, more than one board member could go at a time, but if not, people are willing to be flexible and, and try to focus, that we were mostly worried about you because of your, 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 your full-time job and perhaps needing a specific morning slot or something like that, in order to make that happen.
Can I?
Yes.
Feedback on that? Yeah, I have, I have been thinking about making that tour, and I've been wondering if it would be possible to tour without, not necessarily without supervision, but to go, you know, to look, to look around, you know, throughout the day, you know, maybe just in hallways, not in classes, I don't want to disrupt anybody, but I want to look around and, and see how, you know, kids go from class to class and so forth.
I'm happy to do that, again, I, with anyone, and I think it's important that you're not, I don't just want, you know, in, in any of you just wandering around the school, you know?
Right.
I mean, I think it's important that you either have a, you know, a staff member, again, a lot, lot can go on in, in the school, and I would like you to at least be able to kind of see what we, what we believe are some of the, the pinch points, some of the concerns that are currently, are problematic, and certainly, I think there's a lot more you can glean by just observing and listening as well, on your own, you know, notes that you can take.
Yeah.
We certainly did, when we did, you know, anytime we go to another school, or we, we did our tour, we, we saw a lot that, you know, I didn't, I didn't notice what you saw, I mean, they talked to us and gave us the tour, but there was a lot of things that I noticed that others didn't notice and vice versa. So, that, I mean, so, yes, but still with kind of a guide, if you will, to make that work.
Sure.
If you want to spend more time, we'll, we'll make that work, you know?
Yeah, I would, I had been thinking that at least a full school day.
Yeah.
What, what's the time commitment to go through both facilities, do you think?
Probably a couple of hours, really, because it, yeah, I would say the high school tour, depending on who is doing the talking and, and walking around with you, takes a good hour, and, and middle school, probably similar, yeah.
The, the high school is definitely probably a little bit longer, it's the most complex, you know, it's a bigger building, more complex, a, a lot more going on, so it's probably, it probably could be an hour. I don't know, Patrick, you're, you're in the audience, sorry to pick on you, but.
Oh, I mean.
Good.
You know, yeah, an hour for sure, I mean, I think it would depend on, like, I could give a tour quicker than that, but I think for this purpose, it should, it should be about that long, and also, we should, should kind of time it so that, I think Alex was talking about this, so you see some transitions, maybe some, some kind of hot times, so to speak, you know, there's never a time where you, you're in there kind of wondering where the people are, but, but there are some times when you're in there thinking like, wow, there's a lot of people in here.
Yeah.
So, I would want whoever's touring for this purpose to make sure that, that they saw that kind of variability, whatever, I mean, I'm, listen, like, I'm wide open, too, and, and I have, I've got some great students, they can take you around, and also, you know, so literally, like, I don't mind if somebody contacts me like seven o'clock at night the next day and says, hey, something just opened up for me, I can shoot over, and, you know, I'll make it happen, and if it's not me personally, I'll get somebody else to do it.
Yeah, and I, if, it would be great if the board could do that, and if, you know, Elizabeth says I'm, I can go here, then I'll share that with the other board members, anyone else able to join, you know?
Yeah.
So that, but if it has to be kind of one-on-one, ones, that's fine, too.
Well, can, can I offer, we've got a standing meeting at nine on Monday, I wonder if there'd be an opportunity, like, a tour starting at 10:30 to do both schools, back-to-back?
Mm-hmm.
And would that, I thought that would catch you.
I'm going to plan on doing it the week of the 20th, I'm hopefully going to, this session will be done the week of the 20th of May.
Okay.
So, I, I'll have lots of flexibility, as long as lunch is included at the high school.
Oh, for sure.
Okay.
Turkey Day.
Well, I lucked out, I had Chicken Patty Day on the day.
Oh, man, I gotta, it's gotta be Chicken Patty Day, though.
Yeah.
So, whenever the next Chicken Patty Day is after the 20th, I'll be here.
It could be that week after the, or 23rd or after.
Friday in that week.
Perfect.
Okay.
Well, maybe, maybe we can leave it as, if you could.
Should we do email and try to organize it over email?
And then that way I can coordinate it with Carson and Patrick, and then, then we can also, let you, you each can see kind of who else is doing it, and if not, it works with somebody else, can change the schedule and do it, fine.
But then I'll just say here that once we hit Monday the 13th, I'm real easy, because all the students are leaving UVM, right? So, yeah, once we get out that far, I can go whenever anybody wants, I think.
So, maybe sometime the week of the 20th, we can both do it.
Delighted.
Because we're both pretty flexible at that point.
We're all together, hell, I mean, I don't know, but, yeah.
Yeah, I do, I do think I agree with the, the team's assessment that, you know, to get to a recommendation that the board can make as a, as a body, I think we should share that common experience of having gone through both facilities.
So, the other idea would be, if we really are pushing toward that June decision, would be to have the next board meeting allocate a decent amount of time to, to provide information, to have Pat and Carsten here to answer questions, or, you know, to talk a little bit more about it, and to have in advance of that meeting, hopefully by the eighth, a packet of information. That would include things like the Door and Whittier report, obviously, for this phase, the, the visioning document that, that Pat and Carsten put together, the Niask report, which refers to some of the issues that we have, obviously the link to the April 11th meeting for you, Alex, because I don't think you were able to make it, and, and then some calculations about tax impact, those were some of the brainstorms of things that, that the working group thought needed to be in that packet. I guess our question for you, and you don't have to answer me this instant, but it would be good to know sooner rather than later, would be what other information do you think you need to inform a decision-making process from your perspective? Yeah, and so I'm, I'm willing to talk about that now, or if people want to email me. The other thing we thought of is to have one-on-one conversation, if you're willing to, each of you with me, to sort of just give you some color, because I don't want to take up a whole chunk of board meeting time necessarily, and it might be good to be able to answer questions, you know, one-on-one, and if I'm hearing the same one from everyone, you know, summarize that and put it up on the master planning and visioning website, that kind of thing. So, yeah, I guess that kind of leaves us at that, and then the architects had one more specific question, which was about the evaluation matrix, so they had forwarded around the evaluation matrix that the, the working group and the faculty that had been involved in the process had used, and their question was whether anyone else on the board is intending to use that as part of their decision-making process, because how they work that into their report would depend on, on that, whether that is something that you guys see as valuable, or whether it will be other things that really sort of factor into your decision. Because one thing about that, I mean, the pro to that is, it obviously is a very structured mechanism, on the other hand, it does have all the different eight options, and it is, it is quite time-consuming and very detailed, and you get very into the weeds, if you will, and it's not really broken down necessarily by the buckets that we're talking about, sort of the absolutely do nothing, the infrastructure only, some educational enhancements, and the full bore, so, yeah, they just wanted some feedback on that as they're finishing up their report.
You mean, meaning they haven't gone through and rated each of those?
We have.
Oh, they certainly have, from the working group, that the teachers and the, the rest of the working group, they have certainly done that, from, from that perspective, but I guess one question is whether anyone else was going to submit anything to them to be factored into that, or, you know, just how they, how much emphasis they place on that as they, as they complete their report, is what they wanted to know.
Whether you use it as a tool in your, in your decision-making, or whether you want to also include it as well.
So, I mean, I've looked at it a couple of times, and I just didn't feel I could answer most of the questions, so.
Okay.
I'll, I'll look at it again, but I don't anticipate.
I think that was part of the question, is whether you need, like, if you were going to try to use it, whether you needed additional support to do that, or whether it's just not a helpful tool for people who haven't been deeply involved in the, the day-to-day process of it.
Right.
Yeah.
I'll take them on a little.
Yeah, I mean, two quick comments from my perspective, is I will certainly work to get toward a June decision, I honestly couldn't guarantee today that I'll be comfortable then, but that, that will be the goal, and then on that matrix, I would like to be able to use it, because so much effort went into developing it, and I think it certainly captures a lot of the. I honestly couldn't guarantee today that I'll be comfortable then, but that, that will be the goal. And then on that matrix, I would like to be able to use it because so much effort went into developing it. And I think it certainly captures a lot of the thinking of folks who are impacted by the projects. I, I tended to look at it in bigger categories because it was so finite. So i- if I were to use it, and I can't tell you specifically Bridgette right now, but I, I would tend to, as you look at those four characterizations that Doran Whittier are looking for, I would tend to look at that to supplement, you know, other information, but in, in broader categories.
So you, so I see what you're saying. So instead of having the eight options, it would be more like the, the do-nothing bucket? This is how it kind of rates on these different metrics?
And even within that, I'd say, I'd look at.
Those buckets of matrix or metrics as opposed to each individual metric?
The specificity was way too much, yeah.
Okay.
I know it was a small sample, but was there any sort of character to the responses on the exit cards after the public forum at the high school?
There was, there was, and it was really interesting. Yeah, we would have obviously liked to have had a bigger sample size. There was a pretty clear message that doing nothing was not an option. And really the infrastructure only was not really an option either. So it was pretty clear from those exit cards, at least the folks that were there that night, sort of giving us a pretty clear direction to look at doing a lot of educational enhancements, that there was sort of a, a clear understanding from that presentation that we are, we are missing what we need to support education in the future. I don't know if that's a fair summary, I mean, you've looked at those as well.
So is there, is there some sort of plan for a more scientific survey of the whole community or, or at least the people who vote? To get a better idea?
The vote.
Yeah, well, the vote, yeah. I mean, yeah, we can go, we can go through, yeah, that's true. That's a very nice point. I don't know if that's scientific, it's Democrat, Democrat, whatever. Thank you, I couldn't say that. There's demograph stuff there. I'm going to be quiet the rest of the night. Yeah, I mean, well, there's a lot of work to, to get to that point. I mean, it's, the reason I say is that those exit cards, that, that was a very small select.
Well, it was the people, a lot of people who had worked on this and had already been thinking about it. It was people who were naturally attracted to be to that. We totally understand that, yes.
Are, are you saying that would be a piece of information you'd want before you get to a decision?
Well.
The struggle with that is getting people up to enough understanding of what the need is or, or is not, you know, enough information that they could make a, an informed decision about what they, the cost benefit is to them or to the community as a whole. Because my concern about that a little bit is just that without a whole lot of information, people will see numbers and say no. You know, without understanding what the educational need is, without having been to any of the information sessions or, or that kind of thing. So the question is, um, yeah, I think, I think it's really that we need to, as a board, take into account what we've had so far, understanding that that sample size is small and that that's only a small piece of what we need to, to use to make a decision, in my mind. And that all of us, I mean, obviously I've been closest to it, but all of us have, you know, worked with the system and understand what some of the needs are. We need to figure out what information we need to, as a board, make a decision. And then I think we need to, you know, make clear to the community why we made that decision. And, and there will be a lot more community contact through the design phase in terms of what the new building or the renovations or, you know, what it all actually looks like and how much it costs in the end and what those trade-offs are. So I think there's a lot, this is not like the community's last chance to weigh in. I think that we as a board though are really tasked with at this stage, giving a broad direction to the project. And so that's really the feedback that I'm looking for pretty quickly is, is what other information as a board we feel like we need to make our decision.
Well, if you're concerned about the democratic aspect and wanting more people to be involved, is there an argument to be made for doing the bond in November during a presidential election instead of March, if that's your concern?
I think if we have a hundred-plus million dollar.
People show up?
On March ballot, there'll be a good turnout.
Okay.
March is also a primary next year.
And it's primary.
Yeah, that's true.
So it won't obviously be as big as a presidential election, but it will be, it'll be a, a well-attended if we chose that, that date.
But, you know, to your point too, I mean, once, once we get some more specific direction from the board, then there's a whole litany of things that need to happen around the design, the costing, and then the communication needs to start up again around what, what, what are the benefits and, and, you know, improvement options, you know?
Yeah, I think for me, the most helpful thing was realizing, in my opinion, that this has to be done. Because my first and desire was, oh my God, it's too much money, let's not do anything. But then you see these demographic projections, and I had a sidebar with Gary after that public forum, asking, you know, is one of these 70-year-old pieces of equipment going to fail at some point in the next 10, 20, whatever years? And the answer was yes, and then you're going to have to do it during the school year and where are you going to put the kids then? And so, so for me, when it became a has-to, it's like, okay, so I, I don't need any more information if we're just talking about choosing one of these buckets, as Elizabeth referred to. I'm all set.
That package you're talking, talking about is going to be sufficient for me as well.
Sufficient for you. And what about you, Alex? You were the most clear about not feeling comfortable at our workshop a few weeks back.
Yeah, I'm, I'm still pretty hesitant to jump in on this. Not that I don't think it's necessary, but it just seems like it, it's a pretty aggressive timeline. And especially after, you know, earlier in this board meeting, we had a 50 parents telling us that our timeline for something completely different was too aggressive. I, I wonder if we should be going at this rate and aiming for a, a bond vote of less than a year from now? I, I'd like to know if other people feel that way. I, I'm concerned about that.
I mean, and, and again, you're, you're, you're on the newer side of the board, not to the community. I wouldn't necessarily compare the earlier conversation.
Oh, yeah.
Again, important, absolutely important, but I want to quantify that we've been, we've been at master planning and visioning, you know, for some time, identifying, you know, from enrollment to, you know, facilities to, you know, for, for quite a while. That said, you know, your, your opinion's important and your direction is important. But as far as the timeline, there's a lot of people saying that's, I mean.
We've been talking about it for a long time.
You know, so I'm wanting to be sensitive to that. But I think to your, whatever you need to be able to, to, again, maybe the tours that you're talking about may help.
Maybe.
Maybe the conversations that you might have with the administration at the high school and the middle school or students or with Bridgette more. That's essentially what we're trying to help with is to help make sure people are as informed as possible. That may then lead to, you're not still ready, but we're, we're trying to, you know, be clear about timeline. Because again, we've heard from Dor Whittier and it's common sense that if we, you know, these times when you then go beyond, you know, 2020, you know, all, everything keeps exponentially going up. And then we have other possible potentials, as you said, where there could be a failure or it could be a system issue, so.
So I would also say, I mean, the community is looking for us to sort of be their proxy on the recommendation to get it to the next stage where there would be more community feedback. So it's really all of our obligations to immerse ourselves as much as we need to, to feel confident, whatever recommendation we make. And it might be, it might be do nothing, but it likely won't be. So, so whatever those alternatives are on the other end of the spectrum of eight, I think we all have that obligation to, to do our due diligence on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Alex, my only other timeline concern, I think, was, you know, what's going to happen with Marquette and with Chamberlain? But it seems like those things are going to become clearer in the meantime, as we discuss this stuff and, you know?
Yeah.
Because, right, it would stink to drop nine figures on a middle and high school and then say, oh, we got to do something at the elementary level too. But hopefully that becomes clear before any vote.
That's, that's true. And cer- certainly I'm sticking my neck out for Marquette and Chamberlain and as I know they're not really under attack, but they're being.
Having a hard time, yeah.
People are trying to chip away at them. Okay.
So it would be interesting, I don't know if it really matters a huge amount at this stage, to understand what Burlington is getting for the 70-some million dollars they're spending and what Winuski is trying to get with the $58 million that they want to get on a bond. I mean, just for comparison sakes, yeah, it's.
Yep, I'm happy to, there are resources available to, to talk with that nicely. They've both done little videos and things which sort of, you know, summarizes a lot of piles of information. I just watched one on Winuski today because they just passed their, or they just said that they're going to vote on in May, a $58 million bond. And so there is a video of them kind of walking through and talking about what led them to decide that they needed to do something.
If you want to email that link.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I, this whole packet of stuff, I will add to it, you know, resources on Burlington and Winuski.
Yeah, the BHS website has some really good stuff about the construction they're doing. But the short answer, I think it's fair to say, is that what they're doing for 70 million is our option one, right? I mean, they're bringing everything up to code and fixing infrastructure and.
That is essentially what they're doing.
Not doing much else.
Oh, they're not, they're not getting rid of the whole thing and starting all over?
No.
Around the auditorium, okay.
No.
Well, they kind of are, Alex, but as you know, because you went to Burlington, their A, B, C, D, E and F buildings are not ADA compliant. And so they, they need to address that. And what you're seeing is a, a cost to address that with essentially turning off those buildings, you know? Making a, an addition over the kind of the core.
Yeah.
So it is, it is an ADA access, more of a response.
Yeah, okay. Bridgette, can you clarify for me, please? Is Winuski voting this month?
That is, that was the information that I was given today, that sometime this month, they are voting on a $58 million bond.
That's correct.
Wow, thank you.
Great, all right. We will, any other questions, comments? All right, we'll move on.
I'm sorry, just a clarification, so I, I'm sure we'll get to it when we do, so are we aiming for the 15th as, as a big informational meeting to sort of finalize questions or, you know, bring other folks to the meeting about this or no? That was really kind of the main decision we needed to make around master planning and visioning tonight.
I'm out for that meeting, yeah.
I may or may not be able to be here either, since that's possibly the last week of the session and sometimes that goes late.
So should we be thinking about an alternative date?
Yeah.
Because if we then wait until then we don't, then we're out to June, right, with a, with a meeting? So could we, is there availability, either, either hold that meeting or move that meeting? Probably a little.
Well, maybe hold the meeting and just have a separate meeting about master planning and visioning.
Okay. And we can do some of this by, by, you know, calendar query, but what I'm hearing is we need to do something probably that following week, right? That following week, so we'll be probably, we'll look for availability that following week.
Well, we were looking to schedule the tour that week.
The 20th, week of the 20th?
Week of the 20th, so if we can look later in that week.
Week, mm-hmm.
I know I'm available any night but the Monday. Unless, of course, the session goes another week.
Why don't we work on the calendar on that one?
Got it, okay. Thanks.
All right. Just in the interest of the timing, can we look forward and just check anything on this agenda we might want to?
I think we're going to be okay.
Let's get rid of the board self-assessment.
Yeah, I think we're going to be okay because, you know, accountability superintendent, of course, you can just drop that because that's a total, that's a total loss there, but. But 2.1 I would like to keep, I have Patrick here and he's been, he's been patient.
All right, let's, let's keep moving, we'll keep going then.
But I think we'll be all right, other than that.
Okay, 2.1.
So first thing out of the gate on 2.1 is there's a, first is, you see it twice because we've got one that, I'm looking at the, the detailed policy on 2.1. So if you look at 2.1 under number six, I'm proposing to make some changes to that particular policy.
Is this first reading?
Yep.
Okay.
Again, you could adopt them and, and move, but you probably, you may not be ready to do that.
Don't we usually for these have?
Yeah, yeah, we should on the policy, but I did put action down here at item 11, but we're on item 10. So this first is policy number six, the suggested, again, my suggested change is that we keep the systems to investigate incidents related to student, staff and community safety and that we drop the, the other. And I think.
That comports with our new policy.
Yep. Obviously, we, if that happened, we would have to do it on the, our monitoring report, right? So you'd have to see that change, right, on the, on our summary sheet.
I think there are still, there are a couple of nuances with it though. Six and seven seem to conflict just a little bit because seven still reads fail to limit the use of security video recordings to inquiries by the police about criminal investigations. It seems to imply that you could only use it for that. And then we're saying, yeah, I don't know, they just seem to conflict.
We, we, the desire was is to, to match those up. I think in the actual written portion, seven, I made that, we made that change. Three, four, six, seven.
No, six and seven in the, in the executive limitations monitoring report, the ones on the front page don't match the ones that are actually in the detailed policy.
Yeah, so I need to make those changes.
Yeah.
And I'll, I'll make the change to the seven too, because it should be consistent with inquiries. Similarly, to investigate incidents related to safety. I don't even know that we need.
So that's what I'm saying, I'm not sure that we need two different ones to comply with the new camera policy. In my mind, it's fail to limit the use of live security video systems to investigations of incidents related to student, staff, community safety or inquiries by the police about criminal investigations. Because right now the two conflict. It says you can only use it for this or you can only use it for that and it doesn't quite match. And that's why I'm thinking it probably just needs to be combined. Here is the only, here are the only uses that are allowed for video cameras in the schools. That makes sense.
Yep, I'll, I'll work on seven. So specifically then, so make those changes, we're not ready for action. But if you go to pages six of eight is where you recognize and notice at first review that there was a significant number of incidences that were more than you'd seen before again. And primarily there was, you know, physical altercations and some theft. And so there was some inquiry by the board regarding that. Again, I don't typically do that around, around monitoring reports, but I think it's appropriate enough where I ask Patrick to provide a little bit of an update on kind of what's, what's going on, what, what can you help out in providing that? So Patrick's here. Patrick, again, thanks for, thanks for being patient tonight and sorry we're behind schedule.
No, we're fine. So the first announcement is that I did, I left twice because I was going to watch Vera do her.
Yeah, right.
So she is and remains our champion.
Awesome.
And she was like really great, really, really great. And, you know, if there's an opportunity to recognize her at your level, I think that'd be pretty cool because it's pretty amazing.
Get her to come in and do it.
Yeah, you could, you can watch it online, but not forever. It's not going to be up forever, but you could watch it right now. It's really good. So I, I tweeted the, her stuff, so if you just, that's a good place, it's an easy place to find it. So, so do you, so specific to this camera stuff, in, you know, kind of in general, I think that, you know, if I'm reading this monitoring report correctly, it talks about like that by this time last year, there were 15 requests and now there's 30 requests. There's a few reasons for that. And one, one reason is that we did a significant camera upgrade in the high school. And so there are, there are cameras and the, the ability of the cameras are, has been significantly enhanced. And so, for example, we didn't used to have cameras on the second floor and we do now. And so that's, that's one reason why the requests are increased. But it's also definitely true that, that in terms of, you know, the, whether it's administration or other supports folks who work with students who have challenging behaviors, that, you know, we've definitely had a busy year in terms of, of, you know, trying to work with kids and families around some, some pretty difficult issues. And so what I can, and, you know, and what I can tell you too about these, like, physical altercation, every time it says physical altercation, that doesn't actually mean that a physical altercation happens. It means that that's what we were looking to see if it happened. And, and oftentimes, you know, those physical altercations would range from somebody knocking somebody else's phone out of their hand, being reported to us, you know, as like, and like, I just got assaulted. And then we're like, oh, okay, well, you know, you hear the story and then you come to find out, you know, well, it was, it was probably not. it was, it was probably not, it wasn't a fight, but it was something that was, you know, so we were investigating a physical altercation. And then we have had, there have been actual fights at school. And so with that, it's, it's kind of, that, that's been different for us this year. You know, when we hired a new assistant principal this year, he was talking to me this summer as we were doing kind of orientation. He's like, so talk to me, like, what happens if somebody gets in a fight? And I was like, oh, we haven't had a fight in like seven years. And like, the second day of school, we had a fight. And I, and he's like, there's a fight. And I'm like, ah, it's pretty funny. He's like, no, I'm serious. And I was like, oh. So, so there was this, especially early in the year, we, we definitely were dealing with some challenging behaviors. And then also, we had a fun learning experience about an activity that I don't really want to talk too much about, by, so in order to not promote it, but there is an activity called slapboxing, which you can Google it, I did. And we didn't know it, but there was a number of things that, a number of occurrences of things that were characterized as fights that we came to, in retrospect, realize were actually these kind of staged slapboxing events. And so, and at one point in time, and I'll tell you that there's a social media element to slapboxing, that includes people filming slapboxing. And so at one point in time, we did out-of-school suspensions for a very high number of people, some of whom were combatants, and some of whom were producers of content related to the conflict. And so, you know, it'd be great if they found internships at the media factory, you know, maybe, or through ITN, because they, they were, you know, but, and not to be flippant about it, it was serious stuff, because kids were getting hurt, you know? That was one of the goals. And even though, even though it wasn't what you would typically, you know, consider to be this like aggressor, two aggressors, there was this really inappropriate conduct. And then also, and then there were some negative interactions that started outside of school, that once those two folks got to school, there, that those people, you know, it was on between those two people. And so in, in the grand scheme, in terms of the overall student population, the number of students who have actually engaged in a physical altercation is, is quite small, but it's definitely higher than it's ever been. We've had a number of students who have been in more than one fight. And so, you know, quite obviously, that, that sets off some, some pretty significant alarms for us also. And we have some procedures that, that we put in place around restorative practices. So anytime any student receives an out-of-school suspension, prior to their re-enrolling in school, they have to go through a restorative conference with school administrator, mom, dad, someone from home, and the student, and at times, other affected individuals. And so, and so all of our out-of-school suspensions are then followed up by these restorative reentry meetings. And so, and through those meetings, we often discover other situations that are happening for that student outside of school, or frustrations that that student's experiencing in school. And sometimes we're able to work with, like, through our school counselors and other external providers to get students additional support around different kind of social, emotional challenges that they're facing. And so, you know, I would say, in a couple of cases, it's been a real, almost cry for help, where we've ended up with being able to, to throw some services and support at a student or a number of students, and, you know, get them on a path towards being successful. Along those lines, you'll, you'll know, you're probably familiar with our drug and alcohol policy, which is something that students can also get suspended from school for. And, and our drug and alcohol policy contains a mandatory rehabilitative component. And so students who are involved in, in drugs and alcohol or violate that policy at school, at a school event, on school property, there's an out-of-school suspension that comes with that, but there's also a rehabilitative path that they have to go down that involves some mandatory screening as well as counseling. And so what we've been working with our student assistance provider is creating a parallel expectation around students who are engaged in any kind of conflict that escalates to beyond, you know, an argument. And so, and so what we're doing now is he is working with individual students upon reentry, kind of in an ongoing way, to, and then, credit to him, this was his idea, that he had picked up that, you know, he found that his establishing relationships with students who had violated the drug and alcohol policy seemed to be working in that they saw him as someone that they could go to, to, to get support. And he also wanted to provide that level of support for students who were struggling with aggressive behavior. So I guess, you know, beyond that, a lot of the incidents that are listed in this policy are, you know, kind of run-of-the-mill, 1,200 people in, under one roof, you know, things that are happening. And, and we, you know, it's certainly really important for us to, you know, to, to maintain order and to keep the students safe. And one of the things that we're always challenged by at the high school is, is that balance between freedom and, you know, autonomy and us kind of watching the students all the time. And so we really try to gradually release control of the students and give them more freedom as they get older. You know, our suspension data historically and this year is no different. We almost have zero suspensions of juniors and seniors, whereas our ninth and 10th graders tend to be students who are struggling a little bit more. And so it is, you know, in some respects, that's hopeful. In that I feel like the, the work that we do with ninth and 10th grade students and their families kind of helps engage them in a way so that those kinds of behaviors become a thing of the past. And that's, that's actual hard data that we have. And then the last thing is, is we have to pay attention to everything in terms of, like, you'd be surprised about how subtle schedule changes can affect, especially students in grades nine and 10. And, you know, we're always trying to provide that so-called passive supervision to, to students at the high school. So it's kind of like, yeah, you know, we're going to give you some, some autonomy, but there's also going to be adults around who are going to, you know, make sure that, you know, what's happening is appropriate, you know? And that's kind of like, if you think about it in your house, you know, it's kind of like, kids are in the living room, parents are in the kitchen, you know? Like, there's, there's not like direct supervision going on there, but, you know, you know what's going on. And so that's the model that, that we take. And one of the things that we've been challenged by with the, you know, we have the highest number of students we've had in the school yet, in the time I've been there. And one of the things we've really been challenged by is kids just having a place. And so we, we were challenged by the library at the beginning of the year, because we tried to make some changes about how students and when students could access the library. That didn't really work out, so we had to kind of undo some of that. We had some challenges with creating additional blocks of unstructured time for younger students. That didn't really work out. And we're challenged by certain places in the school that are, when you're on your tour, you'll see they're kind of like far away or off the beaten path. And as students are looking to create that sense of belonging, they're finding those places, and, and it's not necessarily, we're not able, we're not passively supervising anything, because it's like up around the corner, down the bend, by the, and, and we're concerned about things that are happening in those places. And so we're kind of moving students out of those places. And that's kind of creating a tone that's not really exactly what we've typically experienced. So in terms of going forward, we, we did include some elements in our original draft of our budget around working with students who, who need a place where they can go if they become dysregulated. And, you know, that's been our, kind of, that's been like an uptick for us, is students who are dealing with, like, a spectrum of anxiety-related issues. And so, and for some of those students, you know, like, school is tough, you know, and sitting, sitting in a classroom for extended periods of time is tough. And for some of those students, we'd like to be able to create a space where they can go. And, and right now, what happens is they kind of, you know, can I go to the bathroom, whatever, they're out of class. And then while they're out of class, there's other students out of class, and those people kind of find each other. And then when it's time to go back to class, they're even more dysregulated than we were, you know, in the first place. So originally, our plan was to create this space for the students. That didn't remain in the budget, but we did increase our guidance counselor staff. So we now have all full-time guidance. And so, you know, that will help us, you know, minimally, anytime a student, because right now, we have some guidance counselors who are not at the school every day. So it's like, you know, if you have a student who's struggling and needs to see their counselor, and it's Friday, and that counselor's not in on Friday, it's like, oh, okay, we're going to scramble, we're going to get somebody else. They don't know you as well. But thanks to the increase in our guidance staffing, we're going to avoid that for next year. And then also with, in terms of, of guidance, as I mentioned, like, we, those counselors are part of those reentry meetings. And so it was a similar thing, like, if we had a student coming off of an out-of-school suspension, and, and most of our, the average length of an out-of-school suspension is under three days. So they're not, you know, these, these massive long-term kicked-out-of-school experiences, they're, they're breaks. And, but again, if a student was coming back from being out of school on a suspension, and it was a day that their counselor wasn't there, well, the counselor wasn't in the reentry meeting. So I'm grateful for that. And then lastly, we're working with, many of the students who face challenges are not identified as five or four IEP students. Some are. And we're working with our special ed chair, Sarah Ledlow, and we're, we're kind of rebooting our program that we have that specifically supports students, mostly ninth and 10th grade students who come in with, with, you know, real challenging issues relative to being, you know, in, you know, 920-student high school and all the kind of chaos, all the affiliated chaos, you know? That for most of us, we love. And for most of us, it makes us feel good. I know it does for me. But for some, it's, it, you know, it's not. It's, it's a place of, that can be, that can be really hard. And yeah, and I, you know, I'd be happy to keep David and the board, by way of David, posted in terms of what we're doing relative to supporting these students. And I, I, I can't emphasize enough how important it is for us to, to approach students that are having a hard time and, and really work on the relationship, and really work on, you know, developing that trust. And so that when they are juniors and seniors, and they do, you know, get that autonomy, or they do have a little bit more freedom, that they're, that they've developed those skills to make good choices. And so that's often a little awkward for some students who come to us from other places, to be honest, or for students who've been in a lot of different transition, maybe in state's custody, et cetera, they're, they're not really used to that approach. And so sometimes it takes a little while for those students to figure out, like, oh, they're, wow, there's like, a, like, a bunch of people here who care about me. And some of them are like my teachers and the assistant principal. And so, and, you know, actually, right, right about now is when we start to really see, you know, some of those relationships are developed, the adult is now predictable, the boundaries are mostly set. And, you know, I, I think we're starting to see some of, some of the benefits of that. So anyway, I, I can answer any questions, too. I don't, I know, you know I can talk, so, you know.
Update, probably, probably more than you wanted, but I think important to some of the atmosphere and, you know, information at the high school, helpful.
Yeah, and to the, to the board, I think you'll see in this week's other paper, Arnel and Cole craft in an article that kind of speaks to the impact of changes at the high school. And that most often changes for a good reason, and sometimes there's some collateral effects of it, and you get through it. So thank you for the update.
Sure, you bet.
Plan anything different for the new crop of freshmen next year?
Grade nine? I mean, it depends. I, I think I should say also that the, the grade nine students we had this year, they didn't even, they didn't have an assistant principal for most of last school year in Tuttle. And I think we saw a little bit of that, too, that, or at least they, they kind of had a, a bit of a mishmash there. And so, you know, we're thinking about doing a little bit more outreach to our sending schools in the spring and summer to really make sure that we're, you know, catching kids on, on the way in. On the other hand, I'm also really always kind of careful, because I think that eight to nine opportunity for clean slate is often really beneficial. So it's like, you know, who should be on our radar? But we also don't really want to know too, too much, because I know there's a lot of kids who, you know, the middle level doesn't really work for them, and they get to the high school, and they take off, and things are great. And so, but yeah, I've been working with our ninth grade dean and, and our two assistant principals about doing more outreach. And, and I'm not just including Tuttle in that, because 25% of our, of our student bodies from Grand Isle, Georgia, or just not Tuttle. And, you know, a lot, I've, in the most, in the recent past, we've had a, a pretty significant increase in students for whom we're their second, third high school, we're their third, fourth school in five years. We're, you know, been living with my mom in Texas, or Georgia, or, or, you know, California, and now I'm with my dad. Usually that doesn't happen, because things are going awesome, you know? And so there's that, there's that transition for, for those students, too. And so that's just, I think, part of the city right now. I think that's just part of South Burlington. I think it's part of Chittenden County in terms of like affordable housing, and where are people landing, and, and, but there are kids, and, you know, we love them, and we definitely need to, we definitely need to do everything we can to, to help them feel supported. And once we do that, you know, we find that, like, academically, we're good, you know, we, we can, we can find places for students, you know? And, and so, you know, and that's true about our non-resident tuition students also. Like, they come to us prepared to learn. Like, it's not, it's often the adjustment is, is a social, emotional adjustment. All right, cool. What else is on your agenda? I have nine questions about elementary school.
So I think we're good to table, you know, under 11. We can table, obviously, 2.1, and I owe you some stuff on 3.2. And we'll have to factor that in based on our, our earlier discussion. I think we keep negotiations update, other paper articles, board self-assessment, I think we can push, and ask people just to, again, read the packet, or read the examples.
Is the next one is due.
I didn't say skip it.
We're going to do that.
Oh, I thought you said skip it. Oh, I thought you said skip it. Okay. I'm so sorry. I missed what you said. Sorry.
I think we can do the rest, so.
Okay.
All right, we'll move on to agenda item 12, negotiations update. Obviously, you got an update on the ratification of the support staff agreement. My understanding is that the Educators Association has identified an acceptable fact-finder, and at this point, we're waiting for an available date for a hearing. So hopefully that will be scheduled, at least we'll hear about scheduling that as early as tomorrow. All right, other paper articles.
Other paper articles, I am on supposedly for the next one, which is due the 23rd. My question is, we had talked about, I don't know if there's any flexibility with them in terms of when an article runs, but we had talked about potentially putting one in ourselves, and whether we could, you know, move this up, or whether that's a separate issue, and you'd like me to write that one, and then have this one be our regular board column, and have a different topic.
You're, you're talking about moving up master planning and visioning?
No, 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 no. So I'm right now on for, May 23rd would be the deadline, and it would run in the 6/6 issue. And master planning and visioning, I think, would naturally come after we've made a decision. It doesn't make sense, I don't think, to have an article right before that. My question was more, we had talked about potentially an article about RMCS, and whether that one would need to be sooner than the schedule for this one, and whether it would need to, or whether, maybe this is the appropriate one, but my question is whether we had wanted to provide an update on that in the other paper sooner than June 6th, because that's a whole month away. a whole month away.
I think the timing might be okay on that one, for the, to be issued early June.
Because you think we maybe have worked it out? We might have worked it out by then.
Yeah.
Okay.
So the June 6th will be?
Basically, well, it will be a 180 Market Street update, correct?
It would be a 180 Market Street update. So I'm happy to take that one still, because I've been involved in that issue. And then, I think the one after that probably does need to be a master planning and visioning one, or if we do get to the point where we feel like we don't have enough information to make a decision, we can retitle that article later. We can decide later on to change it, but I think we should probably put a placeholder in there for master planning and visioning, and what the board decides on the first June meeting.
So Airport Noise would become probably its own article at some appropriate time, hopefully, soon. And anything we want to add after? We basically have three kind of identified, we don't have authors for all of these, but I'm happy to help on certainly Market Street. Anything else we feel like we need to make sure we address? This will take us into the summer, I guess.
I kind of feel that we should have a series of articles related to master planning and visioning, like, there are lots of topics.
Series, yeah.
There are lots of topics that could be covered on a monthly basis, to keep people's attention on it.
I agree with that, Martin, thank you.
Yeah, I'm not sure what the next, I mean, the first one would be kind of an overview where we are, but we can go into the educational benefits, what other schools have found, you know, there's any number of things, I would imagine.
Maybe we should consider taking the next calendar year, and sort of dividing it up into topics related to that.
Yeah.
Great.
Well, questions already went on specialization, or whether we think that that is going to be handled more on an in-person basis, or some other way, but it feels like, obviously, there's a lot of.
Why don't we put that under the topics to consider?
You're hanging in there, Arnel, tonight.
All right, do we have anything else? All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item 15, setting the agenda for May 15th. And we know we want to put the airport on there.
Sub mitigation, or whatever we normally call it, I just wrote that there. Master planning, I think.
We decided that that would still be a short update at that meeting, and then a bigger one separate, yeah.
Move to the week of the 20th, if we can, right? The larger timeframe, okay?
Just a quick question, why was the, this is just, as I know, why is the June 5th meeting moved to June 6th? Behind that.
Why was the June?
Is it a holiday? Okay.
Anything else on the May 15th?
Oops, sorry.
Well, we'll need the policy back on. So we've got executive limitations policy and monitoring, we'll need 2.1 back on again.
Yep. And Martin, will you, well, will you know much in advance, if you were able to come to that?
Possibly not.
Because I know I'm out of the country, so.
It's a little nutty that.
We probably ought to.
Brian and Alex, you're.
Yeah, we really need Brian and Alex, otherwise we don't even have Quorum, yeah.
I very well could be here, I just.
I would suggest we maybe try to skinny this agenda down, so.
I think we mean the 15th, Alex. We're talking about the 15th, yeah.
Of course, every time.
The same actually goes for next week's steering committee meeting. Again, it's, I already know that that's a very, very busy calendar, and we may be going late.
All right, unless there's anything else, future agenda items? Let's just skip that one, in the interest of time. 17, consider the minutes of the meetings of April 11th, 15th, 17th, and 22nd. So the 11th was the public information session.
Yeah. It's pretty slim notes, so I thought that one was fine.
The 15th was negotiations subcommittee meeting?
Yeah, I thought that was one, too.
The 17th was the mediation session.
The only thing about that was whether, yeah, I mean, I guess, it was a little unclear exactly what time, because Ira showed up a little early. And we did check to see if there was public there and all of that, but, I mean, we could leave it at 9:00 a.m., but technically, we started talking to Ira a little bit earlier than that.
I just don't, I thought I took note specifically when he started.
Yeah, it was about 8:50 when we started, but, and we have, it's a tiny thing, but there are like, there's, we've got 5:53 here, 5:54 at the end, and then, in the notes of our regular board meeting, we say it was 5:55. It's a tiny, tiny thing, but it just sort of feels like, when did this meeting end?
When I wrote down.
Yeah.
He makes a change.
We've got three different times and three different places.
So we can adjust those?
That was all I had.
All right, and the 22nd, which, do I have that one?
It's another subcommittee meeting.
Okay.
It looks fine.
All right, seeing no other changes than the meeting on the, sorry, I missed it again, the 17th. Those are approved by consensus, so we'll move on to the consent agenda, and walk through that.
Yeah, so we have Maria Gordon, again, this is a next-year hire for math, 0.8, and we also have a bid for minivan. Reason the minivan, just a quick overview, is that currently, we have students that are required to be all over the place, and we're heavily using taxi cabs, and it's concern on safety, but it's also a cost. And so, this, we think, is a good avenue to go down, and will really help us with meeting the needs of students in the most cost-effective way. Again, our driver, they do not require the CDL, so there's some savings there as well, but nonetheless, this is a recommended way to move forward. So we've been looking at this for quite some time, and so that's the recommendation.
Is that budgeted?
So currently, it's budgeted, because we currently are, you know, we have dollars in the budget to transport students. So it's in the budget, it would be a reallocation, and we'll show that, where that is happening, you know? Obviously, different place, right?
So are you taking money away from what's budgeted for taxis?
Where we normally are pulling cab money, and for transportation, it's going to go into the minivan, obviously, and for the driver.
Okay, so the next, my next question is, so it looks, you're getting two of them, and is that for one year of the lease?
Well, again, we wanted to use them on an ongoing basis, on a going forward. And yes, so it's two of them, because we've got a number of students that are, as you've seen probably in the past reports, we have many outplayed students that are traveling to different places. And so, instead of sending a full bus that is currently tied up, and not committing to the taxi cabs, this is a much more cost-effective way for us to do it.
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion on those? All right, and Agenda Item 19, AP Order 39, any questions? Seeing none?
Second?
Don't we have to approve the AP order first, unless it was adopted by consent?
It's not an action.
Oh, excuse me, thank you.
Only for questions or discussion.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.